Thank you. Chairman Zidek is joining us remotely today via phone. I just want to check and see if he can hear us.
Do we understand whether the chairman is in connection?
He's not there yet. He's not connected.
Okay. If you happen to speak to him remotely, ask him to identify himself when he joins us.
Hello, Brian? Hi, okay. So he's here on the phone.
You hear us, Brian? Hello? Can you hear me? I mean, the darkness of the earth is already full of heated water. Again, if I might, if you like, where I can just sit here and let's speak into this here.
Chairman Zidek will be joining us shortly. With that, we will go ahead. With that, we will go ahead and begin with our first agenda item, which is a presentation by the executive director and staff members regarding potential use of county allocation of American Rescue Plan Act funds. Mr. Lazarus?
Thank you, Dr. Taylor and councilmembers. Also like to thank members of county team who are here to speak to some of the important initiatives we could potentially pursue under the American Rescue Plan and certainly all the members of our community who came this evening to also provide input. The American Rescue Plan provides us with an opportunity to take the funds that have been awarded to the county by the federal government and use them as a forward-looking approach to respond and recover from the effects of the pandemic. Contrary to the CARES Act funds, which the county has pretty much fully obligated, that was meant to respond to the pandemic. This is more forward-looking and the idea is to use the funds to get the county back to full normalcy in all of its operations, both public and private. From an agenda standpoint, I'd like to provide a brief overview of what the Rescue Plan says we can and cannot do, look at some of the commitments that county council has already made, some of the proposals we've received, and then talk a little bit about summary and next steps. Then I will clear the stage and let both county staff and members of the community come and talk about the compelling needs that they would like to present. I've used the expression many times about overfilling the hole. I think we are perfectly okay with scheduling more work than the $110 million allows us to do because over time, some of that will settle out, some things we won't be able to do either because of the time involved or because they don't qualify. So it's good to have more things on the table right now than we know that we can do. So as an overview, as I said, ARPA is really forward-looking, talks about giving us be able to respond and look forward to recover from the pandemic. The Act establishes four general categories, which I'll talk about in a moment, for uses of those funds. All these funds have to be obligated by December 31st of 2024, and the funds then have to be expended by December 31st, 2026. So there's a two-year period where we can make our commitments, enter into agreements, and then fund through the end of 2026. We do have to provide a quarterly project report and expenditure report starting October 31st of this year. We did submit a recovery plan, which by the requirements of the Act, has to be posted on our website, and that report was posted upon its submittal of August 31st of this year. Going forward, at the end of July 31st, we do have to post an annual report as well. And as the bottom line there says, we'll receive a total of just over $110 million. Half of those funds have been received, and the other half will come to us next summer, July of 2022. The allowable uses, we can account for revenue loss with broad discretion on how to use those to provide government services. We did run the U.S. Treasury model and looked at losses from 2020, which is our first year after the first full year where we weren't impacted. And the estimate is a little over $8 million for 2020. We can roll that into this year's budget if council saw it desires, and then we can relook at it every year. We can respond to the COVID-19 public health emergency and its negative economic impacts. And as we go through this brief presentation, you'll see that we have initially programmed a good amount of those monies towards economic recovery. We can provide premium pay for certain eligible workers performing essential work. Since the start of the pandemic, council has made a small allocation of those to some of our public health and public responders. We can use the funds for investments in water, sewer, and broadband infrastructure, and sewer does include both sanitary and storm sewer. And storm sewers can include those things which contribute to water quality, water detention. So when we talk about open space, there is an opportunity if they serve in a water quality capacity. And then costs to administer the program are allowable, and I have proposed an allocation for that as well. So to the extent staff is involved in meeting the requirements of the ARPA, we can cost those efforts to the Act. So as we start going through the short list that I have, the first one really talks about county commitments and allocations. And commitments are things that council has approved. You see, there is just under $5 million for the county health department to fund for startup and ongoing COVID operations. In terms of negative economic impacts, council has made an allocation of just over $400,000 for workforce development and the job training assistance program. On premium pay, I mentioned before, we have used a little bit, about $282,000. And then our administrative expenses to date are about $100,000. So those all come up to $5.6 million out of the 110. When you look at some of the proposed allocations, I talked about revenue loss, and if we carry it out through four years inflated at 4.1% a year, which is allowable under the Treasury model, it comes out to about $34 million. The health department, we looked at funding the cost share, the local cost to the county for three years at $5 million each year. The reason for that is as we start the health department, we don't know where it's going to settle out when it reaches full operating, its full operating level. So using Chester County as an example, their cost is about 26% to 30% of their cost each year. If we assume a $15 million a year operational cost for the county health department, a third of that is about $15 million for the three years. I will also take this as a point to indicate that generally speaking, we are not going to apply ARPA monies to ongoing commitments. This is really one-time money, so we are not going to use the funds to balance the county's budget. We do not need to do that, and I wouldn't recommend that because it's bad fiscal policy. There are a couple of exceptions. The Delaware County Health Department for the next couple of years is one of those. Budget management, we do have some ongoing COVID responses. I've just put in about $2.5 million a year for three years. There is some overlap between that and the health department. It's something that council will want to consider. And then I allocated 2% for servicing costs. That may be a little bit on the high side, but 2% of a grant is usually an allowable cost. So when you add all those up together, bottom line is $64 million, but a large amount of that, $49 million, is really for operations where we've estimated both revenue losses and funding the health department. Some of the proposals that I've received from within the county, as it relates to public health and negative economic impact, Ms. Goodrich will come up and talk about some of these as well, Ms. McEver. There is a program proposed for credential transfer for our community members who have credentials from places other than the U.S. to get those recognized. There's some programming training. We're looking at loans and development funds, perhaps up to $30 million for small business and for local business development. Ms. Goodrich will also talk about a developing Delco initiative and marketing to attract. So those are some big numbers that make up a large amount of the allocation. I think council will look at those and see if that is the right level. Public defender's office, Mr. Welsh is here. There are some programs there that you see listed that were initially part of our submission to the federal government for the earmark program, which did not get through Congress. Those are all related to reducing recidivism as well as criminal justice reform. Mr. Welsh also recommended that we set 7% of the total amount towards criminal justice funding, and I will let him talk about that when his turn at the mic comes. Our district attorney is here and has proposed a gun violence reduction program. And by the time you, I think you add up the staffing requirements, the equipment support, and the ability to administer that, it probably comes up to about $1 million. That's also probably a little bit of a heavy estimate. And then Mr. Alclair here, as a recorder of Ds, would like to talk a bit about document imaging and electronic access. Mr. Alclair was a leader in the county during the pandemic of making public records available online, and that is a long-term sustainability strategy as well. So those come up to around $49 million when you add those up. Some other items that we've received interest, but I haven't yet costed them or received costs. At the recommendation of our council chair, we are looking at a homeowner's assistance program and how to define that and put some parameters to it. There are some open space and stormwater infrastructure that are tied to some of the initiatives that Ms. Schaefer has brought up. Satellite health department facilities are things that we'll have to look at, and to the extent they contribute to public health, particularly in historically underserved areas, they do qualify. Our health department is looking at a mobile health clinic, which will further allow us to project the health department into areas around the county. There are some proposals for Little Flower Park and Lansdowne Theater. Our Greenways Grant Program is something that we would probably look at. That was successfully launched, and if my numbers are correct, we have about $13 million total in grant requests from 45 of the municipalities in the county. Then finally, we have a partnership with Family Support Line, and they are looking to, they are partners with the DA and with Child and Youth Services, and they are looking for some help in finding space in Upper Darby, Chester, that part of the county. So those are things that I've received, and we have not yet developed a cost model for them. In summary, you can see that I broke it down by commitments, allocations, and proposals, and we are a little bit over. It's $114 million. But that is really dependent upon the big buckets where we put funds. The Commerce Center, there's a $36 million total when you add up the things that Ms. Goodrich has brought up. Again, council can look at that and further subdivide it or look at other potential uses. The projected revenue loss is $34 million. We may choose to not use all of that to replace county funds. Again, it is not our intent or need to use ARPA monies for ongoing and recurring expenses. It's really to look at one-time startup costs or unique projects that qualify that we would like to do. The health department, the county share, as I mentioned before, is about $15 million. Criminal justice reform is a 7.7, and then the ongoing COVID response. Those five items together make up $100 million or 91% of the total. That's where the money is. That's where we can look and see how we can delegate and further use the funds in different areas. We got, we do have some subject matter experts here, and you can see them listed, and I'll invite them to come up and talk about the things that they're of interest to them and what they've proposed. But I do also, as we go through this discussion, the next steps after this evening are what initial, what additional initiatives would council like to pursue? And where can that money come from and from which bucket? After we get all the feedback, how would you like us to follow up with recommendations? And then this is a long-term program. Really, we're talking about going from this year through 2026, so it's really just over five years. It's reasonable to expect we're going to make adjustments during that timeframe. How do we want to do that? I would recommend that we provide for quarterly updates in that regard, so we can always assess where we are. We can do project reviews associated with the requirements, reporting requirements we have for the federal government. And then we can use that as an opportunity to, again, to see where we are, make course corrections, see what comes up over the next couple of years, and reallocate as council would see fit. So I am now going to turn the mic over to our subject matter experts and take copious notes as we go through the discussion. So Mr. DA?
Thank you, Howard. Thank you, council. I'll be brief. Mr. Madden, and I think Dr. Taylor also already know about-
Can you wait until the screen goes off for a second, so we can see you?
I'm not sure that that's a benefit, Mr. Solicitor, but I will certainly accede to your wish. Hi, Mr. Martin.
Thanks, Mr. Solskjaer.
Thank you. Now that Mr. Martin can see me, can we, can I begin again? Thank you, Bill. I think Mr. Madden, Councilman Madden and Dr. Taylor have already been briefed on our proposal to do something about gun violence, more than we're already doing in the city of Chester. So one of the president's directions about using these funds are to deal with the other epidemic going on in this country, and that's the epidemic of gun violence. We see it happening all across the country. We've taken active steps here. The partnership between county council, my office, and the city of Chester has been bearing great results with the community group we've started down there called the Chester Partnership for Safe Neighborhoods. We've been able to reduce the homicide rate by over 50% and the violent crime rate by over 25% in the city of Chester. It's great, good news at a time when we need it, but there's a lot more work to be done. What we're proposing here is to take the sort of same initiative and spread it out to other parts of the county, particularly in what we call Sector 4, some of our smaller police departments, where non-fatal shootings, for example, cannot be fully investigated because they don't have the same investigative staff that some of the larger departments do. So what we would like to do is create a gun violence unit in the Delaware County DA's office, hire four detectives. Our detective bureau, it's called the Criminal Investigation Division, they provide detective and other specialized policing services to a lot of our small police departments. So we would be doing that on the gun violence front because the evidence all shows that a small number of people who are responsible for these shootings can be stopped if we can do good police work and good prosecution work in partnership with the community. So our goal here is to take that, to hire four new detectives, to bring them onboard, and we are also going to be implementing a task force approach, both regionally and in just the four suburban counties. Montgomery County District Attorney Matt Weintraub from Bucks County and myself have all been in contact just today, recently, to start a task force approach to stop the trafficking of guns. At the same time, we're trying to investigate and stop non-fatal shootings because non-fatal shootings become fatal shootings. The person who commits, who is willing to shoot somebody, even if they don't kill them, they're eventually going to be the one who either gets killed themselves or kills somebody. So we want to get on the front edge and be proactive, as we have been in the city of Chester, but I need your support to do that. So that's the essence of our proposal. I don't know if, Mr. Madden, you're probably the most familiar, and Dr. Taylor as well, if you have any questions or you want me to stop talking and sit down.
No, I would look, I would underline the points that you make, TA Stolzheimer. I think many of the things that we talk about, about turning around some communities that really need support, it all really starts with making them safe communities.
Absolutely.
So in addition to just the simple element of keeping people safe, I think so much that we talk about in terms of, you know, economic development and revitalization, it's got to start when folks feel like they can move into an area and feel like they're not going to get shot at.
Absolutely.
So I think it's really, it's important, the initiative referring to, and I think it's something that I would certainly support our funding for.
Thank you very much.
I do have a question, and it just kind of goes to a point that the executive director- It goes to a point that the, that the executive director made, which is that these were not to fund operational costs. And yet, listening, I hear, and by the way, I agree this is an epidemic, and I agree it is a public health concern, and I am in favor of targeting funds to do that. But what gives me pause is adding four detectives, because those detectives don't go away, and this funding is going to be gone. So what's the proposal there?
Well, first of all, I would just suggest the President of the United States is the one who proposed this money be used-
I understand, but he's not spending this money right now. We are.
I understand that as well. We are going to be hiring four detectives, hopefully, with the supportive majority of council, so we can save people's lives. That's number one. Number two is what I've committed to Mr. Lazarus, that over time, when this funding source goes away, we will look at all of our budget and try to absorb these costs, or we will find other ways to fund it. We continuously look for new funding sources through federal funds and through PCCD in Harrisburg. We're very aggressive about that.
You guys do a great job, and I appreciate that. I think that's the answer I needed because, you know, my concern is with the health department, this has been a boon because it can cushion, you know, it's a little bit of a cushion that is softening what would otherwise have to come out of operational funds. And it's hugely unfortunate, and I never would have wished this pandemic to get us there, but with this other stuff, and which is equally devastating and definitely deserving of funding, it's just that we need to look at how we're spending this money in terms of what additional obligations are we taking on by doing it.
Can I just ask, so this is based on the model, very successful model in Chester, that congratulations, is doing so great. But that model has not only the law enforcement side of it, it also has the social service aspect. Is that what you're planning to bring to these other smaller communities as well?
Well, the model won't be exactly the same, councilwoman. It'll be the same strategy, though, which is to go after and make sure that we're investigating fully all the cases of gun violence. Right now, we don't have the capacity to do that, and certainly a lot of the local police departments do. If we can get to that next step, where we can actually bring community partnerships more into play in some of these communities, we would love to do that, and we will fund that however we have to. We have asset forfeiture funds, which we've used part of to fund the project in Chester. We've also been able to get state grants because we have been aggressive and continue to be aggressive to try to get funds for that. But absolutely, this is, this is not, it's not a law enforcement panacea to the problem of gun violence, and this has been what we've been preaching for 25 years. We're not going to arrest our way out, but it's a major component of stopping the violence is to get the 1% of the people who are willing to kill their fellow citizens to tell them, you can either follow our laws and our norms, or you're going to have to be removed from our society. And the community groups that partner with us, like Corey Long here, they are the ones helping us get that message out in a way that I think is really beneficial to the entire community.
Thank you, Mr. Solskjaer. Can you talk a little bit about, I know your team has done a lot of research on this and kind of a research on not only the Chester area, but Section 4 in the county and where the problem is and really what the impact will be once you have these four additional?
Sure. It's a great question. Really, as I was trying to suggest earlier, Dr. Taylor, a lot of our police departments depend upon CID to do the detective work for them. So because there's been a rise in shootings across the country, all of our detective bureaus are getting more and more caseload, which is taking them away from other cases. So the ability for have a CID detective work with local police, build the relationship up, get to know people in the community so that we can find out beforehand if somebody's going to shoot and try to interact, or afterwards, if we can quickly solve the case and get the person removed and bring justice to the community, we're going to do that. So it's going to be a continued partnership with our local police. We're going to broaden it. We're going to try, as Ms. Taylor, Ms. Schaefer said, bring in other community aspects as well. But it really is about just bringing collaborative approaches to law enforcement. And so if we at the county level continue to invest in our local communities by doing this, the funds you've given us to invest in the community side in the city of Chester has made a major difference in the partnership so far. So these four detectives is the best use of this money to get the problem addressed immediately, but we can try to bring other resources to the table to fully build out the program the way we would all like it to be. I hope that answers your question.
Yes, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I mean, as the district attorney said, I think there, he's rightfully sort of identified this void within the investigative array right now, and it's these non-fatal shootings. We have a lot of time and attention spoken about homicides and the clearance rates that have increased substantially under the district attorney's leadership. But non-fatal shootings is an area that really needs more, more heft in terms of investigation, and that's really where these four detectives would help out. Because as you said, non-fatal shootings, if not addressed, lead to fatalities the next time there's a shooting from the same person.
And we also hopefully get, Mr. Madden, to the trafficking issue as well, because there are a lot of illegal guns flowing in and out of Delaware County. And if we can change that supply or interrupt that, we can save people's lives that way as well. So we would like to do both, but again, we need your support.
Thank you, Mr. Solskjaer.
Thank you all.
Councilmember Ruth, I'd like to address your concern because DA and I met earlier today and talked not only about ARPA funds, but also about his budget. And there, this is a case of, we don't know what's going to happen in the future. The DA has been particularly successful in gaining other grants. In fact, he and I participated in a call with the deputy chief of staff in the White House for local government, and they encouraged us to use ARPA funds in this way. So as we look down towards 2026, several things can happen. We can be successful with reduction, put mechanisms in place that negate the need for the additional positions, and we can integrate them back into the DA's and CID budget through attrition, if that's the right thing to do. If the program has longer legs than that, then one of the things DA and I talked about was putting grant support in his department so they can continue to look for additional grants to support their critical programs. So I don't, I don't want to feel like there's inconsistency here. That and the health department are really the only two recurring requirements that we've addressed with ARPA funds, and the intent is that we'll see, hopefully be very effective and be able to draw down in a couple of years, but if not, we can find other sources of funds. So I wanted to just amplify what DA Stolzheimer talked about in that regard. I've also gotten a lot of great input from the public defender, and I'd like to introduce Mr. Welsh and let him talk about his visions for use of the funds.
Good evening, members of county council and colleagues from the county and members of the public. Just to hone right in on Councilwoman Schaefer's question, sort of two sides of the same coin, and the social service aspect of what you're discussing, that is, you know, there's the law enforcement and getting people who are violent in our communities off the street, but then there's a question of like, what services does our community, does our criminal justice system provide? So I'm here to advocate for county council to consider allocating 5% to 7% of the funding from the ARPA money towards criminal justice. Throughout the United States, the pandemic has disproportionately impacted low-income communities of color, and those communities are also disproportionately impacted by the Delaware County criminal justice system. So county council has a unique opportunity here to use the ARPA resources to fund pilot programs within our criminal justice system with organizations that have proven track records of success. And by funding these pilot programs, council can fill a vast unmet need for programs in our criminal justice system that provide holistic, comprehensive care for system-involved individuals. By meeting the needs of these individuals, these programs help heal our communities by reducing recidivism and by increasing accountability. So these pilot programs are criminal justice reform that falls within county council's jurisdiction. These programs would give judges, district attorneys, probation officers, and defense counsel options. They give us options to improve outcomes, and that's something that county council has the authority to do in our system. Criminal justice programming clearly falls within the guidance from the Department of Treasury regarding the allocation of ARPA funding because specifically, the funds can be used for evidence-based community violence intervention programs that are designed to prevent violence and mitigate the increase in violence during the pandemic, and critically, to assist community members with navigating and applying for available federal-state- to assist community members with navigating and applying for available federal, state, and local public benefits and services. So what we find in the criminal justice system is that people end up in our system when they have trouble navigating the variety of other social service systems that exist. And the programs that I'm asking County Council to consider funding here each have a component that helps the member, the people that they're assisting in those programs, to navigate the systems that already exist in this county, whether it's mental health treatment, drug and alcohol treatment, career training programs through workforce development. Whatever those needs are, these programs each individually help mostly my clients navigate those needs. Importantly, the reason to fund pilot programs, these aren't just any criminal justice programs. These are programs that work. I've been involved in the criminal justice system for over a decade, and these are programs with proven track records of success in other jurisdictions. Just very briefly, there's two programs specifically on the juvenile side. Both Students Run Philly Style and YEAH Philly in Philly, if they came out here, would be YEAH Delco. Students Run Philly Style is a running and mentorship program. They use mentorship running as a goal setting, as a catalyst for positive change, helping youth navigate physical, social, and economic barriers to build their own pathways to success. And YEAH stands for Youth Empowerment and Advancement Hangout, and creates safe, authentic hangout spaces with culturally relevant programming and teen-led interventions. They provide case management, peer mentoring, conflict resolution, and a positive incentive structure to keep kids out of trouble. Both of those programs exist in Philadelphia in partnership with the juvenile justice system and the District Attorney's Office, and both have track records of success. On the adult side, there's three programs. They're all reentry programs. They've also started to branch out during the pandemic to do diversionary work. But Branching Up is a partnership with the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society and Temple University, New Leash on Life is a 501(c)(3), and Par Recycle Works is a 501(c)(3). All of those provide job training and educational resources to people who are going to be getting out of custody, and then provide job training and case management resources to people outside of custody. So for the Branching Up, it's teaching people sort of landscaping horticultural job training skills. For New Leash on Life, it's animal care. And for Par Recycle Works, it's electronics recycling. But all of them are job training behind the walls and internship job training outside the walls. And all of them have track records, again, of reducing recidivism. So why use the ARP money for it? Pilot programs are a unique opportunity for council. They're programs that we can bring here, that we know have been successful elsewhere, that we can use the federal funding to bring them and fill this unmet need that exists. And then with the reporting aspects that we have under these grants, with quarterly reporting, we can see if they're being successful. And then, once we see that their demonstrated track record of success that they have in other jurisdictions continues here, then we can seek to find other ways to fund. So to go to Councilman Ruther's question to the district attorney, the Inmate General Welfare Fund in Philadelphia is used to fund New Leash on Life. So there is an inmate general welfare fund here in Delaware County. So some programming for those three programs, Branching Up, New Leash on Life, and Par Recycle Works, programming that's used for George W. Hill programming could be used to fund these type of programs. Additionally, with two years to prove success, foundations and other philanthropic funders would be well, it's easier when you go to a foundation or to someone who funds grants, to say, we came out to Delaware County, Students Run Philly Style has worked with X number of youth, they've reduced the recidivism rate and achieved these outcomes. So I'm confident that after two years of a track record with that, we'll be able to find private funding. And with the amount of reform that's happening in our criminal justice system, or proposed to be happening under the leadership of this council, I think reallocation of existing resources to this need is something that County Council should do. Again, the criminal justice system has many different players who have small pieces that they're involved in. But criminal justice, but programming that impacts our clients, whether it's programming through DHS, or whether it's bringing this type of programming to Delaware County, is something that falls within the jurisdiction of County Council. And I think that this is a rare opportunity. In fact, I can't think of another time in my career where an opportunity like this has existed, to fund these programs, and then when we can demonstrate that they work, continue their existence in our county. So the last thing I'll say is, the programs that I just outlined, the budgets that they've submitted, which I've submitted to council, come out to roughly $3.2 million over the two years. But these are programs that aren't Delaware County programs. But the district attorney alluded to it, that Mr. Long and the Making a Change Group is doing good work in Chester. And there are other organizations in Delaware County that are doing good work. And I think council should consider setting aside a portion of the funding, and setting aside even a group of people from the District Attorney's Office, from my office, from the courts, to evaluate those programs. And yes, you should fund these programs because they work, but we should also look to fund programs in this county that haven't necessarily gotten the support of council before, but could also work. That's all. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from council?
Yeah, I have a question. How did you come up with this list?
How did I come up with these programs?
Pointing on these five programs.
Because I asked people that I know throughout the criminal justice system in Philadelphia and Montgomery County, sort of what works. And then reached out to all of the executive directors of the various programs, and held meetings with each of them. For some, as Mr. Lazarus said, for the Pennsylvania Horticultural Society and for New Leash on Life, they were part of an earlier grant proposal that we put forth to Mary Gay Scanlon, Congresswoman Scanlon's, office for federal funding. And the rest of them are just, you know, having been in the criminal justice system for over a decade, you get to know which programs work, and which programs don't work as well. So I think, I wouldn't be standing here asking council, none of this money, this is the public defender coming here, not asking for a dollar for my office. I'm asking to fund things that help my clients, and that help our communities. And I wouldn't be standing in front of you if I hadn't met with all of these program leaders and believe in them. And the other thing that's true is all of these programs want to come here. They want to expand their mission to Delaware County to help our residents. So it's sort of a win-win situation.
And in, you know, you mentioned the desire to use further funding for programs that already exist in Delco and are up and running now, but that could do more with more funding. Would you, do you feel like you have the knowledge and experience to kind of vet out which ones would really benefit for more funding?
I mean, I feel like I do, but to be honest, I think that that's something that council seriously needs to look at. I'm the public defender, so I have to spend my time. We have thousands of clients and attorneys that I need to train on how to effectively represent our clients, and provide zealous representation. So like, that's my primary mission. So like, I would say that this is an area that council could use help, could use someone with criminal justice experience who can actually vet and help administer these programs. Because the programs aren't just these ones that I put forth. There's the programs that exist in the prison. There's programs that exist for drug and alcohol treatment and mental health treatment through DHS. Like, the criminal justice system touches, unfortunately, it's a system where all of other systems sort of end up when there's failure or there's gaps. So yes, do I think I could personally do it if that was my job? Yes. But I have a, we sort of have a handful of things to do in my office, too.
You know, I have a sort of an observation, which is, there is so much in flux right now with what we're doing with juveniles. We have a juvenile board of managers who has to address that. We are transitioning the prison. We are, I think, doing a good job of, for the first time, really trying to integrate our Department of Human Services with offices like yours, and trying to integrate that to make sure that we're using the skill and expertise we have in a way that can further some of these goals. I'll be honest with you, the idea of taking on a whole bunch of new programs when we don't even have anybody to administer them right now, it doesn't mean that I wouldn't consider doing it two years down the road, so that a commitment could be made in 2024 to expend the funds by 2026, because that's a certain amount of time. And if council deserves, decides to reserve some of the funds for it, I'm, you know, open to considering that. But when we're looking at the gaps that we know exist that might require funding, like jump-starting the availability of mental health beds for adolescents in Delaware County, of which there are zero, these other programs are great, but other people can fund them, and at least in the short term. So I feel like I'm being kind of a negative Nellie here. But I just think the needs are so great, and the resources are thin enough, that it might be something to look at. And reserving an amount to address things like this, I'm open to. But I'm not open to jumping into a whole bunch of programs, because you're now talking about paying somebody to be our person to administer all these programs.
So my response to that would be that if the council is considering taking back over the prison, then you are already considering taking back over all the programming, because programming exists in, well, right now, I would say there's a dearth of programming in the prison. But I think that if council wants to do a better job with administering the prison, then part of which is fundamental is taking over criminal justice programming. And the current population in our prison is disproportionate, or almost double that which other jurisdictions nearby us have, meaning Chester County, Montgomery County. There's 1,557 people in our prison, whereas last year, there were 900 and some. And part of the answer to getting people out of prison, and over-incarceration, and reforming the criminal justice system, is providing programming to do that. The answer to get people out of jail is to provide them the services they need. So while I don't disagree that you could wait, I would just say that the matter is urgent.
Just to add on to that, I realize we have a lot on our plates right now, across so many different areas that fall under our purview. But the reality is, the criminal justice system just can't wait around for us. Every week, hundreds of people enter this system, whether we like it or not. And we really have an extraordinarily well-timed opportunity here, to have this money before us, that can allow for us to seed these pilot programs. And, you know, I think we've all heard that, you know, this is a council that really wants evidence. We want to see that the investments we make, how that's translating into impacting people's lives, reducing recidivism, getting people back on their feet into well-paying jobs. You know, so I think we really have no choice but to take advantage of the opportunity that is before us right now, with this pilot program funding, and see what works and what doesn't work for us. Because, you know, we just can't wait. We have too many people who are being impacted now, that can't wait around for a few years to see what, you know, our plate looks like in a couple of years. They're entering our system right this very moment, and at a time when we are transforming the jail, when we are taking a more aggressive approach under council's purview, to do what we can to enter folks into programs that are more appropriate to them than just sitting idly in jail, we have to take advantage of that now.
Thank you.
Can I offer something? I don't even know if folks can hear me. So I'd like to, the next two speakers, both Ms. Goodrich and Ms. McKeever, are going to talk a little bit about how we can leverage these funds for economic development and some of our workforce development programs. So I'll save some time and introduce them both at the same time, and let them present their goals and objectives.
I drew the short straw. Good evening, members of council. Please know that when, what is being requested this evening is not all-encompassing of economic development in Delaware County.
If I can interrupt for a second. Apparently, we have some transmission challenges with Mr. Zadik, and I'm told he wanted to make a point. I guess, what don't we understand about his connection to our meeting?
He can hear us.
So what is required for us to hear him?
Can he not just call in through one of the phone here?
You guys hear me now?
I just heard a voice very faint for the first time. Brian, you want to try that again?
I can. I think they might have just unmuted me. Can you guys hear me?
You're not on mute, but you're very faint.
All right, just go ahead without me, then.
Well, I think, do we think we know the answer? Hold on one second, Brian.
Let's give us a second. Sorry, it wouldn't be a meeting if there weren't some technical difficulties during this time, right?
Perhaps you can just stick that mic into the, we've done this at a previous, do you mind?
Yeah. Can that get on the other side? Try it again, Brian. Can you hear me now? A little more. Seriously, just go ahead. Don't worry about it. Just go ahead. Don't worry about it.
We can hear you better now.
Also, just dial in on this. Hey, Sean? Can you just dial in on this number here? Will you just stick the mic to it? I just turned on the sideboard meeting. Sorry. Can you just turn it up some more? Brian, give us another test. Can we hear you?
Testing, testing.
That was better.
Good?
Yeah.
All right. This is a preview. You're going to hear the disembodied voice of Brian. I'm going to haunt this council for years to come. This is the first of many instances. I was just going to offer, if I can, I know we're here talking about money, and I appreciate that that is a subject matter here. And fundamentally behind this is how to best use this money for the betterment of Delaware County citizens. And when our public defender office speaks so passionately about reforming the criminal justice system, and I know Mr. Madden has worked quite hard on this as well, I just would offer sort of the fiscal argument that is in addition to the moral argument, which is that if we do a better job with our criminal justice system, and we have fewer people that we need to incarcerate, or that we do incarcerate, that money can be reinvested in the community. So setting aside the fact that it is the morally just thing to do, I do also, because it's kind of my shtick, want to point out the fiscal response, that it is fiscally responsible at the same time, and hope that, you know, certainly, I think it is a valuable consideration as to how we might best invest this money.
Great point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm going to play devil's advocate a little bit again, which is, a number of the problems that we have with our criminal justice system relate to not having places to send people. We don't have places to send people who need mental health treatment. That holds things up. You know, if we don't have some of these places, they can't get out. If we don't have courts who are willing to take a more holistic view of probation violations, you're going to keep throwing people into jail because of probation violations, regardless of whether they have programs to go to. So while I see this as worthwhile, I think it is almost putting the cart before the horse, in terms of making sure that we are addressing all of the underlying problems that are going to appropriately divert people. And I absolutely agree with the public defender, that if we are doing the prison, we need to be looking at programming. But, you know, I'm really familiar with, is it the Kids Run Philly Style? I mean, I've volunteered at the Philadelphia Marathon for about 15 years, and they're there every year, and I've been part of a running club that's helped with them. I know who they are. They're a great program, but they're not going to be addressing this problem. No, I don't want to hear anything more, Mr. Welsh. Thank you. I'm just saying that these are all really worthy things. But my question is, can we effectively, you know, are we going to effectively get out of them everything that's promised? I will just say I'm skeptical. Unlike the program that the DA is suggesting, which is pretty specific and targeted. And I, all of this stuff is critically important. The criminal justice system is critically important. There's, but if I had to pick a priority to be able to divert people, it would be enhancing our mental health treatment capacity in Delaware County, first and foremost, before working on some of these other programs. Thank you. Are there any other questions or comments from council?
I guess I would just ask, if Mr. Welsh did have something else to offer, I'd like to hear from him. to hear from him.
I'll say that I do not disagree at all with Councilmember Ruther that mental health, diverting people with mental health issues who are currently incarcerated at George W. Hill is a huge priority, but the criminal justice system, there's no one solution that's going to solve over-incarceration. There's a number of solutions that need to be implemented in this county, and having criminal justice programming like these is an obvious choice. And while I don't think it's like putting the cart before the horse, because what this is, is for judges, judges don't have these options. When a judge, when one of my clients is standing in front of a judge at a sentencing hearing, and the question is, I can give you a county sentence in jail, or I can sentence you to the branching-up program, or to the new leash-on-life program, or to the Par Recycle Works program, those programs get my client out of jail earlier, and then keep them out of jail in the future, and make them a productive member of our workforce. So while I don't disagree at all, and I've spent a lot of time over the last month on the front lines of dealing with getting our mentally ill clients out of jail, it is a multi-pronged approach to the number of problems we have. Thank you.
Last thing I'll say on that is, we don't need to decide right this very moment which programs get seed funding and which don't. I think the point is that for fairly modest sums, we can experiment over the next couple of years with an array of things and see which have the best bang for their buck and which don't. That's all I have.
All right. Ms. Goodrich, comments?
Take two. Good evening, members of council. Know that what is being requested this evening is not all-encompassing of economic development in Delaware County. We have balanced this request against our normal program of work, participating in regional applications for economic development, and monitoring what may be applicable to other programs, not solely relying on ARPA funding from the state and federal level. Knowing that this administration is very concerned about sound land use and development, and that our largest impediment to redevelopment is tools and funding, we would ask you establish a redevelopment Delco fund. Turn gray commercial corridors into vibrant economic communities. Utilizing the fund, we would seek to leverage additional funding sources as we partner with municipal leaders to transition commercial landscapes with shovel-ready sites to attract new businesses. This fund would also be used to help with infrastructure elements in older communities, including gateways, and could seek assistance and create, could assist in creating affordable homeownership in our communities. We are also proposing that council take a look at our requests for a revolving loan fund established in Delaware County that would focus on disadvantaged business owners and disadvantaged business locations. Seed funding that would help to mitigate bank risk, and also lower the overall cost of borrowing money for small businesses and emerging businesses in Delaware County. We also have proposed a Develop in Delco Initiative to invest more into an accelerator concept. We have an accelerator program for the last five years that has assisted a dozen companies underwriting shared workspace and connecting those companies to resources. ARPA funding provides an opportunity to expand the program to additional locations, locations for different industries, or to create our own bricks-and-mortar accelerator or incubator. We are also proposing monies to attract, and while that would be a normal program of work for economic development, we want to take a look at how we do that and focus regionally to be able to propose, you know, normal economic development funding, marketing is to site selectors, to businesses directly. We should be doing that in a regional front, as opposed to doing it individually as Delco, but also, we should actually be positioning Delaware County as a lifestyle. And that is because as workforce trans, pardon me, transforms from being in-person, in an office space, to also virtual, we're going to be competing for residents in the future. Our early analysis through ESI shows that Delaware County has an annual $2 billion leakage in key retail services. That means that Delaware County residents are shopping elsewhere for food, clothing, and other goods. With that in mind, we are also proposing a retail-up Delco fund to help increase the vitality of our retail Main Street businesses and emerging small businesses through education and support services. We believe that Delaware County Chamber of Commerce would be a natural partner to assist in this endeavor, and they've already started to create some of the technical assistance programs that have been lacking in our county. The educational services run the gamut from finance to technology, and certification to contracting opportunities, to creating mentorship programs. We'd also seek to partner with the Chamber on Local Market Development, creating B2B forums between retailers and anchor institutions, bricks-and-mortar locations and emerging good producers, and hope to open opportunities or create opportunities with event-day-based markets that exist or to be created. Going back to that lifestyle and branding Delco, we'd like to strengthen our residents' support of small businesses, making introductions at existing placemaking events, or creating opportunities that showcase the access, the assets of Delaware County through existing events like those at Rose Tree Park, supporting an expanded Festival of Lights, that would also incorporate some of our local shop owners, and also incorporate things like live entertainment from area nonprofit cultural institutions like the Delaware County Symphony, or also from, you know, small businesses that work on, I think they're called like rock schools, right, where they have kids, they teach kids how to play different instruments and what have you. So you have, so School of Rock? Yeah, School of Rock. School of Rock, thank you. But we'd also see like sort of a mini Kindle Mart that is, you know, very much expanded in other areas, just to start off. Expanding Main Street business markets and festivals with business associations. COVID taught us a lesson in how to market differently in terms of bringing things outdoors to people. We would also look to partner, took a straw poll of a couple of universities. We'd look to partner with third-level educational facilities to host Delco days on campuses, invite the community in for the students to see what is offered in the neighborhood, as opposed to expecting that they are going to look outward. Highlighting one example, the Festival of Lights, we see this as a one-time opportunity to be able to increase the attraction, increase it with live music from area cultural institutions or local music teaching schools and some vendors, with some heat lamps, increased electric capability, and additional lights. For retail-up marketing Delco and branding Delco to Delco, we would see this as a partner with Delaware County Chamber of Commerce, as I mentioned, to assist with these endeavors. And I appreciate your time this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. And Trish McFarland from the Chamber is here if you'd like to hear additional comments on the footprint that they've already created on some programming for technical assistance.
I had two questions. One was, you and I had talked at one point about the possibility of doing some micro lending and some entrepreneurial, entrepreneur training, especially in underserved communities where people don't have access to capital.
Absolutely.
And is that part of what you're trying, what you would be proposing to address?
Through the revolving loan fund? Absolutely. The revolving loan fund would be established, and a revolving loan fund, for those that aren't aware, is a lower rate, a lower rate on interest. You don't buy in 100% to the project, you buy a portion of the project to mitigate the risk for the bank, to increase bank participation, so the borrower would get a blended industry interest rate, as long as, you know, then they pay back the fund at an interest rate, which means that that fund then lives on in perpetuity, potentially.
Yeah, and the idea is partly to educate people who don't know how to position their business to be able to access capital, so in order to increase their access.
Correct. So, yeah, we have been working with, the Chamber of Commerce has been talking to a few folks about increasing some technical assistance. The other idea that has been put forth is perhaps that is a way to attract ACDFI within Delaware County by offering the RLF fund.
Great. I guess, and the other question that I wanted to put out there is, I know it's, again, it's something you and I and Councilwoman Schaefer have talked about, is the need to make sure that as we're going into these programs, that we're doing so with clearly documented expectations of our partners, and milestones, and other things, because if we're going to be investing a substantial amount of money, or even a part of what you've asked for, or proposed, I shouldn't say asked for, but proposed, we need a way to measure effectiveness.
Absolutely.
So is that, has that been part of the discussions, and would that be part of the proposal?
It has not been part of the proposal, but I'd welcome the opportunity to expand on the proposal that's already been submitted by adding in, we can talk about what that pipeline looks like for Rebuild Delco, we can talk about what that RLF expectation would be. Absolutely. We can expand on that.
Yeah, I just think, you know, and I would say this to the executive director, that my view is almost anything that we're investing, and I think, I consider all of these investments, whether it's criminal justice, you know, gun violence reduction, economic development, infrastructure, you know, really anything that we're talking about doing with these ARP funds, making sure that we have expectations, and if not a clear idea of what we consider to be success, a clear idea of what we consider to be effective deployment, and as a sort of, an idea of measuring return on what we're putting in, because, you know, we need to account for this.
So I had a, oops, sorry, if you had something to say.
Well, thank you for that. Part of the project plan that we have submitted and posted talks about the use of SMART objectives, and using those to develop performance measures by which we can measure the effectiveness. It's actually part of our reporting requirement to the Treasury under ARPA, and we've addressed that in the project plan, which I said, as I said before, is posted on our website. So certainly, your thoughts are well incorporated into the approach for all of these programs we propose on submitting for use of ARPA funds.
So sorry, I had a question about how this loan fund would work. Would we, would we take a security interest in the business to secure the loan being repaid? How do you, how does, how does one of these work? Are we, are we one part of a lender? And I think I, I thought I heard you say that we would be sort of sitting side by side with banks, but could you explain better how that, how this actually works?
I would love to sit side by side with banks, Mr. Chairman. Essentially, an RLF fund in economic development terms does take a second lien position on any collateral. It would potentially take on less, the less amount of debt issued, rather than the bank in a perfect world. So it would, it would be dependent upon how much funding would be needed, what the project entailed, and what would the ask of the RLF be in comparison to other potential funding sources. But we wouldn't seek anything likely less than a second lien position. We would take a little bit more risk than a bank normally would. The whole purpose of that would be to mitigate their risk in participating in that project to assist the small business.
That makes sense. So are we taking, is our second lien then secured, or are you filing like UCC filing statements, or how are you, how are you actually achieving that security?
Unless, of course, it's a working capital, then yes, you'd be looking at a personal guarantee.
A personal guarantee, so not, not secured by sort of the assets of the company?
If there were an asset of the company to be able to be leaned, that would be the primary position, but secondary to that would be a personal guarantee, as is with all lending.
Okay, and then ultimately, we would be having the loan paid back, ideally.
That would, that would be the goal. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, as a former bankruptcy attorney, I never actually saw one that got paid back. I was only ever brought in when it didn't get paid back. But doesn't that fly in the face of the need for us to spend this money by 2026? I mean, if we get the money back, have we, have we complied with our spending of it?
So I've been having those conversations with county solicitor Mr. Lichtenstein about whether or not transferring the initial fund source to the Commerce Center entity would actually be the end of that ARPA spend, or if we need to pivot and perhaps look at doing loan guarantees as opposed to doing an RLF.
Okay, so it's sort of to be determined then?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
My question.
Go ahead. You go.
This was a quick one, I think.
Mm-hmm.
How do you think about the right sizing of these proposals? I mean, how do you kind of get to the numbers that are proposed here? Is there any kind of market read of what the demand would be, and therefore, kind of what, what might be the right number for us to consider?
So, and I provided bands, right, in terms of low band, high band, and it's based off of conversations with colleagues, some of the early response that we have from ESI on our reimagining of the Commerce Center, and what economic development looks like in terms of Rebuild Delco. That's just sort of a quick gut check from all of the projects that were lined up prior to COVID that haven't moved because of lack of capital, and still exist.
Okay.
So three points I want to make. First, I don't think it's any accident, and this bucket is one of the biggest, along with our Health Department. I mean, that is what ARPA was written for, to address the negative economic impact of COVID, and the way you do that is you invest directly in your economy. So I'm completely comfortable with that, and I think it's going to be fluid, because as, as these programs get rolled out, and as we go through our strategic planning process, different approaches are going to come up. Second, the list of proposals that you've put forward is very aggressive. It is, I mean, land banks, revolving loans, investing in accelerators, attracting new business with marketing, you know, events extraordinaire. And I want to make the point that this is a Commerce Center with, that with two or three employees put out $20 million of Delco strong money in under a year. So I feel like, even though right now it's, it's not staffed to do all of this, that the capability and the wherewithal to do this is in that department. So I'm confident about that.
Thank you.
And then finally, I wanted to just make sure that everyone who's listening to this knows what ESI is, when Laura referred to that. ESI is a consultant, a firm, Econo-Salt, and we, the county hired them six months, four months ago, three months ago, to help to draft a strategic plan for our Commerce Center and for our economic development, to come up with an organized, strategic, methodical way to invest in our economy. So that plan, which is in the works right now, and lots of stakeholders are giving input, is going to inform a lot of what we do here. And that's still in the works. So again, I want to make the point that this money is, I'm glad we're putting a lot of it in this bucket, but it should be a little fluid as we go through this planning process. And that's all. Thank you.
And I think just the last point I would make, and it somewhat dovetails on the comments of Mr. Zidek with regard to the criminal justice system investments, in which, you know, when you reduce, you know, something that's a burden on the system, and we reduce our prison populations here, you know, I think when you invest in commerce and you are attracting new business to the community, you're building your tax base. You're creating more recurring revenues that we can, over the years, reinvest in every element of county government. So I think as we consider a lot of these potential investments on our part, a lot of them really are, they're seeds in the sense that they can grow into something that become recurring benefits to our county. And I think, you know, a lot of these really provide that.
Thank you.
Good evening, council. Very briefly, I'd like to describe the Workforce Development Board. Here in Delaware County, the Workforce Development Board is charged with investing federal dollars from the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act. Our job is to connect employers to job seekers, and to ensure that the skills those job seekers have meet employers' needs. That can range from training in a classroom setting, to work-based training, to straight job placement. Everyone knows that there has been a negative impact on our workforce because of COVID. We've seen a shrinkage of individuals in our local workforce. We're very lucky to have many tools that we can use to help employers and job seekers connect, but through our strategic planning process about a year ago, we identified six goals, one of which is diversity, equity, and inclusion. Underneath that goal, we identified two gaps that we cannot use our Federal Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds to address. The first one is the underemployment of high-skilled immigrants. What we would like to do is to put out a brief request for proposal to identify an organization that is led by immigrants and serves immigrants, who will help new arrivals to navigate credential transfer or assessment to achieve the credentials they had in their home countries. Our second project that we are not able to address currently is a specialized computer training program that targets communities of color. For the credential transfer, we're unable to use our Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act funds. However, there are philanthropic sources of funds that we, after we've established the need and the success of the program, we would be able to apply for those. Our hope is that for the computer programming program, that once we've been able to see a successful implementation, that we would be able to look at our current budgeting and see if we're able to increase the funding amount per individual served. So we hope that you'll consider those two requests.
Thank you, Ms. McKeever. I know that the immigrant credentialing program is something that we have lacked in Delaware County, and something that we found that individuals come here and they are much more highly qualified than the jobs that they are gaining access to, just because of the barriers. than the jobs that they are gaining access to just because of the barrier that they're encountering trying to get their credentials approved here. And so thank you for kind of bringing that to our, to us.
Absolutely, and one of the career pathways we've seen that has the most potential is our healthcare career pathway. We know that lots of folks come from other countries where they had medical nursing or degrees that we really are not able to access because of the credential transfer issue. So we're hopeful that that will help with a giant gap that we have in our current workforce. Thank you.
Yeah, and again, this is, you could take what I said five minutes ago and apply it here. You know, when we make these investments to help folks who are relatively new to our community get on their feet and, you know, hold, you know, productive jobs in the county, that's, that's an investment in our system and, you know, furthers our, our base for future investment.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Last subject matter expert who has asked to have a couple minutes of your time is Mr. Alclair, who is our Recorder of Deeds. And I said, just as a way of introduction, what he's done with our real estate records is pretty remarkable. He was able to keep things going during a period of time where many counties had to shut themselves down. And the lesson that we all can draw from that is how important it is from a sustainability and resiliency standpoint to have our records available electronically.
Chairman Zidek, Vice Chairman Dr. Taylor, members of council. I'm Robert Alclair, the Recorder of Deeds. And on the heels of that introduction, I will disavow my subject matter expertise. I hope it doesn't become too apparent too quickly. But, you know, my project involves a continuation of what we did back when COVID hit, and in particular, a project we started with CARES Act dollars, where we rushed to get some of the older documents available online so that we actually could completely operate the office without having title searchers need to come in and be physically present in there. I certainly don't compare favorably, you know, the, the project I'm proposing to anything that will save lives or help the mentally ill or, you know, decrease recidivism. I'm under the umbrella in perhaps not necessarily a proper use or properly prioritized under ARC, but I'm looking at being under the umbrella of the traditional coronavirus relief funds that, you know, were born of the pandemic. And, and my particular experience with that was when this building was virtually dark, other than folks wearing badges. My 13 or 14 employees were the only ones who were here. And we had to stay open because while Governor Wolf shut down, you know, a broad range of industries, including to some extent, real estate for quite a while, not, not banking. And there's a critical part of the real estate industry and banking that simply cannot go on unless our office functions. So as part of that, we were able to get things available online over a term of a number of months with funding from various places. At the time I appeared before you and asked for those CARES Act dollars, which was at the time $90,000, I said, you know, this is actually a component of a much larger project that would be more involved and, among other things, would require a, a personal review of almost 5 million images, 5 million of the 35 million that we have available online. What this project would do, you know, it's not going to save lives unless it's lives consisting of man hours, but it, it will perfect what we offer online. So it will make it less likely for people to need to come in to look at a document on microfilm or microfiche or off of an original record book because we will have looked at those images, perfected them, and more importantly, paginated them in such a way so that when your average person goes online to find a deed prior to, or any record prior to '81 or earlier, that as opposed to it being, I've been speaking jargon here, but as opposed to it being in any number of single-page TIFs and impossible to just go grab that document, you know, you, you'll be able to do that because it will be paginated, it will be cut off. And so for each of those documents that you search, your average person would save an extra 10 or 15 minutes. And with the integrity of that document having been highly scrutinized and repaired, if possible, or replaced if missing, then that would obviate the need for somebody to come into our office to look at microfilm and microfiche. So by comparison, I, you know, I, I feel like a, a draft horse lining up with the thoroughbreds here in terms of, I, my, my project must sound pretty hollow by comparison, but in terms of the coronavirus and back when the days when this building was dark and we were striving for ways to continue to operate the county government to serve the public, this was what, what we did by necessity. And my project would entail, insofar as my office is, is concerned, completing that, so.
I, I know you and I had conversations during the COVID shutdown because I was hearing from a lot of people who found it very frustrating to try and do business in Delaware County and, you know, in businesses that were still allowed to operate, as well as hearing from a lot of people who were trying to refinance their houses to manage the effects. And, and they were running into difficulties because Delaware County wasn't open for business. And, and I, credit to you and your team, you found a way to get open for business, I mean, completely, and to get people in, and we were able to pick that up. But I think what you're proposing, it doesn't ring hollow to me. It doesn't necessarily serve a social justice or criminal justice need. But what it does do is it furthers making Delaware County accessible and open for business. And I think for a long time, for a variety of reasons, everything from sort of neglecting infrastructure to, I think Delaware County has always been hugely provincial, I think, in the legal world, I think in the, and I, and I say that as a lawyer in Delaware County. You know, we were one of the last counties in the state to not require special admission to the bar here in order to practice. So that's the kind of mentality that's been here. It's like, it shouldn't be easy to do things in Delaware County. Well, I, I think if we're going to open this county for business, if we're going to move into the 21st century, projects like this, which are not glamorous, but they're really necessary. So I, I thank you for bringing it forward, and I will look forward to hearing from Mr. Lichtenstein, his, his opinion on whether or not this is something that can be funded. I won't put him on the spot today, but, but I will definitely be asking him that question.
Thank you, and thank you for not putting me on the spot also. And again, good luck with your Solomon-like challenge as to who to, who to give these funds to and what to devote them to. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, folks, appreciate it.
I'm going to counter what Mr. Alclair said. I think it is a vitally important project. It sets the groundwork for a lot of the transfers and a lot of the business development activities that we want to take on. Not only that, to get back to what our council chair said, it's a multiplier. By putting these systems in place where our Recorder of Deeds, others can build off of them as well. So he has the proof statement that we can do many of the things that, that we want to do in very adverse circumstances. Those are the internal subject matter experts. With council's permission, I'll turn it over to the external subject matter experts who have waited patiently for their turns. But getting back briefly to the next steps discussion, in case we don't have the opportunity to return later in the evening. My goal after this evening is to come back, maybe realign what the buckets are and come back with some approaches where we fund opportunities and then have a mechanism in place where people and members of our community can take advantage of those. I appreciate the opportunity to lay down the, the groundwork so that we can use and multiply these funds to the benefit of all who live and work in Delaware County. So with that, Madam Chair, I'll turn the mic over hopefully permanently back to you.
Thank you, Ms. Lazarus, and thank you for all of you who have presented thus far. At this point, we would like to turn it over to public comment. I would like to remind everyone that there will be five minutes given to each person. Mr. Martin here will make sure he's keeping time. And I know that there's a list for, that has formed, Mr. Martin.
If I, if I can make several points. First of all, as you noticed, all the, all the county department heads made their presentations with their masks. Anybody who is to speak, please leave your mask on. We also have a sign-up sheet. If you're going to speak, please sign up. And the first thing we'd ask you to do when you come to the microphone is identify yourself by name and address. Now, I will point out to everybody, including Mr. Zidek, who can't see, that there are probably more than 30 people here in the room who might want to be heard. So while there will be an absolutely firm five-minute limit, there is not a requirement that you speak for five minutes. And, and the second is that I would encourage people not to feel put out or in any way diminished if the council members do not either question them or comment upon their statements. Again, if everybody speaks here, we will get home well into the second half. And I would, you know, so, so they will, are attuned to what everyone will be saying, but you may not get direct feedback from what you're saying. That's all.
Mr. Martin, may I ask a question? And, and I could be completely going down the wrong path here, and if I am, I apologize. But this was a meeting, it's a special meeting called for purposes of discussing the use of ARPA funds is, and I'm not sure what the rules are in terms of public comment. Can people get up and speak about whatever they want? Or are we asking people to focus on the, the question before us?
This meeting is, is directly and solely about the county's plans to expend these ARPA funds. And if folks ran afire from that, it would be within the discretion of the chairman to ask them to stop their comments.
Or come back next week.
Or, or come back either to our regular public meeting next week, where all, essentially all comments relating to matters of public interest are fair game. And then there is a separate special meeting on Thursday evening relating to solid waste disposal where issues associated with that will be open to public comment.
If I could add, the, one of the primary goals of ARPA is to make sure that it solicits and incorporates comments and initiatives from the, the public who has been impacted by the COVID pandemic. To that extent, I'll work with Ms. Morowski to set up an email box to receive any applications, any letters of interest, and we'll do that within the next couple of days. And I do that just because if you send it to my email, there's probably a good chance it will get buried under everything else and I won't get to it. But by setting up a dedicated Dropbox for you, it'll ensure that we have the opportunity to read and consider every valid use, every worthwhile idea that comes out of our community.
Thank you, Ms. Lazarus, thank you, Mr. Martin. I, I know that there is a, quite a long list forming. Do we have a, do we know who was first on the list? This will be going in order.
Christina Heffernan?
Christina Heffernan, thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is Christina Heffernan, and I am here.
Sorry, excuse me, please state your name and your address.
Sure, my name is Christina Heffernan, 726 Wisteria Drive, Newtown Square, Pennsylvania. Thank you, good evening, Council. I thank you for this opportunity to address you tonight. I am here to follow up on a public comment that I sent Council one year ago, this week, actually, to advocate for our volunteer fire companies here in Delaware County. Full disclosure, I am biased as I have been volunteering with the Newtown Square Fire Company for 30 years now. I would never presume to speak for all the emergency responders in Delco. However, I have heard from many of our fellow companies this past year, and I can tell you without hesitation that they are all struggling. The struggle's not new, but COVID has definitely exacerbated the situation. If you'll allow me, imagine for a moment that you're a business owner and the pandemic strikes and how hard that was to survive and keep employees safe and working. You have unreliable income, and now you need to scramble to purchase protective personal equipment like masks, Tyvek suits, hand sanitizer, and disinfectant wipes, all with no budgeted funds for these items. Now imagine that business is essential and has to be open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, 365 days a year. And by the way, you own 73 of these businesses. You still have to pay your mortgages, your truck loans, and all the utilities that come with running a fire station. And the icing on the cake is that your employees are actually volunteers. So they aren't even getting a salary for risking their lives. This is what Delaware County's volunteer fire companies have done for a very long time, but especially since March of 2020. They have protected the 46 municipalities that they are responsible for. And the amazing part is that they continue to show up because that is how much they care about the communities that they live in. One of the greatest tragedies is not only do these dedicated individuals volunteer to respond to any 911 calls, they often have to spend their free time fundraising for this second job, hobby, dedication, whatever you want to call it. Most residents think their fire companies are fully funded by their taxes. Unfortunately, they are not. We greatly appreciate contributions from our townships to our annual budgets, but that money in no way covers the operating costs of running a fire company. Most companies build their own stations, buy their own trucks, and pay their own utilities and insurance. People have no idea how much money or how much their taxes will go up if a fire company goes out of service. The townships will have to start from scratch to buy buildings, vehicles, equipment, not alone, not to mention paying salaries and benefits for the employees they'll have to hire when there's no volunteers left. Volunteer firefighters save residents millions of dollars every year. But to keep the lights on and pay the mortgage, they need to have carnivals and spaghetti dinners or host bingo or flower sales, none of this which could occur during COVID. Our Fund Drive contributions decrease every year, and even more so since people were out of work due to the pandemic. We in emergency services know that times have changed and volunteering is not respected or encouraged like it was 50 years ago. In fact, most families cannot afford to live in our county without two or more jobs just to pay the bills. There is not the time or support from employers or schools like there used to be for young, healthy men and women to fill this vital role in our society. An often quoted statistic states that there were approximately 380,000 volunteers in Pennsylvania in the early 1970s in the fire service alone. Today, that number of volunteers is closer to 30,000 in the entire state. Anyone will tell you that it is getting harder and harder to recruit and retain volunteers. I fear we are approaching a tipping point, especially in our area here in Delaware County. Thus, I am again humbly proposing to Council that they allocate $100,000 directly to each fire company in Delaware County. This seems like a lot of money, but it really isn't. This would total between just over $7 million, which is about 13% of the funds. I submit to you, there is no more important infrastructure in this county than that of our volunteer firefighters. I ask you to please use this opportunity to assist those who scrape by every year to serve our communities at a fraction of the cost that it would be if there were no volunteers. Most of these companies have been existence for over a century, and they have a proven track record. The money could be used for debt reduction, recruitment and retention of volunteers.
Chair, the speaker's time has expired.
Sorry. Could you please come to a conclusion? Okay. Thank you. The survival of the emergency services should be a number one priority, and I thank you for your time and consideration. Thank you. Does anyone have any questions?
Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you.
The next person that signed up is Mr. Hudema.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Hudema. I reside at 2107 Academy Avenue in Morton, Pennsylvania, 19070. Thank you for allowing me and the public to present to you this evening. My name is John Hudema. Currently, I'm the Fire Chief of the Holmes Fire Company in Ridley Township, and I am the President of the Delaware County Fire and EMS Chiefs Association. Tonight, I will be speaking on behalf of the Fire and EMS community. On March 12th, 2020, the leaders of every Fire and EMS department in Delaware County came together over a phone conference to be briefed on the COVID-19 pandemic and to discuss how we could operate through changing times. Within hours, our lives would be changed forever. The fire stations voluntarily closed. Members were allowed in for dispatch incidents only. Training ceased, fundraising efforts were lost, we reduced our responses, we were told to wear masks around people we considered family. Along the way, we witnessed and provided aid to many residents who fell victim to this ever-changing virus. Terrorist members of our organizations fell victim. Those that left us took with them knowledge and experience that takes years to accumulate. Those members can never be replaced. Through it all, we came together and sometimes found creative ways to protect ourselves, our members and our families. We shared resources, educated one another, and continued to deliver professional services to the residents of Delaware County. In 1736, Ben Franklin founded the Union Fire Company in Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. This was the first fire company in the United States, and it was all volunteer. In the last 285 years, volunteers have comprised the largest number of first responders in our country, similar to here in Delaware County. Many volunteers over the years have chosen to take paid positions within the Fire and EMS ranks of our cities, our hospitals, and in combination stations. Most have chosen to continue volunteering and provide the same professional service to our residents as our brothers and sisters who receive an hourly wage. Since those early days, Fire and EMS personnel have been asked to do more with less, less personnel, less equipment, and less funding. We have found creative ways to construct, modify, and repair equipment to do our job effectively. Most times, we were told to find our own funding to purchase and repair damaged equipment. This led to fundraising efforts by our members that in the public eye have become accepted practice in the modern-day fire service. Truly, the days of car washes, spaghetti dinners, and tag days to fund our projects and pay our utility bills should be a distant memory, but unfortunately, it is not. You may be wondering how this all ties into the American Rescue Plan Act. Funding from the American Rescue Plan Act could allow for fire companies to recruit funds lost during the pandemic because of fundraising, because no fundraising could take place. Financial hardships have been created because of lack of fundraising. Companies previously used those funds to upgrade equipment, maintain their buildings, and provide for the needs of their members. In today's society, we cannot, in today's society, we can see that volunteerism is not woven into the fabric of society as it once was. For reasons unbeknownst to me, society's morals and values are much different than the world I grew up in. Too many folks ask what is in it for them rather than what they can do to help. We see this all too often in Fire and EMS community. Numbers are down within the ranks. Some departments lost valued members because of risks associated with the pandemic. Others stated that the pandemic was not what they signed up for. Some walked away because they could not deal with the large number of sick and dying people they were exposed to on a daily basis. Finally, some found different activities to fill the time they had devoted to their departments. American Rescue Act funds could be used to establish recruitment and retention programs. Such programs could expose today's younger generation to the emergency services or allow us to seek out citizens with specific talents and skills. Once informed and educated, these citizens would be, would become valued members of our organizations and contribute towards making a difference in their communities. Funding would enable us to do more for our members with the hopes that they will stay interested and involved. Continuous training for our members is crucial. Funding could be utilized to assist with the construction of a new burn building. No price could be placed on the value of live-fire training. Our previous burn building was torn down before the pandemic because it outlived its life expectancy. Our responders have had to travel to neighboring counties to receive live-fire training. Traveling to neighborhood, traveling to neighboring counties has created logistical nightmares and has allowed for our companies to incur costs not previously associated with live-fire training. In days past, on their weekly training nights, any department could be at our training facility within a short period of time and conduct hours of live-fire training. All could be wrapped up at or near 10 o'clock when the facility was to close. Now, without a burn building, companies travel up to an hour each direction.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, the speaker's time has expired.
And closing, I urge Council to consider our first responders when determining how the American Rescue Plan Act funds will be distributed. We are truly frontline workers in harm's way every time we are called for service. Funding would contribute to the longevity and success of our departments. Funding would also allow for continued professional service and provide for the residents of Delaware County. Thank you.
Mr. Morris.
Good evening, members of Council and members of the audience. I'm here representing myself as an individual, but I also am here representing the volunteer fire department.
Name and address, please.
Dick Morris, 11 Casson Hill Drive, Concord Township. As I said, I'm here to represent myself with a question or two for the Council, but also, as a member of the Concordville Fire Department for over 30 years and a firefighter for over 65 years in this county, I heartily endorse the previous two speakers and implore you to look very deeply at supporting these fire departments. They cannot continue the way they are going today. It is a physical impossibility. I also happen to sit on the Finance Committee of our department, and we have had to reach out and dig down deep into our pockets to hire. We now employ 30 people, volunteer firefighters and EMS people. We cannot afford to continue doing that without going bankrupt. So maybe we should apply for a loan in the loan program that I heard about. So deeply appreciate your listening to that, and I can tell you that we need all the assistance we can get. Now, I have a question. As my understanding, that every township and every borough in the state of Pennsylvania, as well as throughout the whole country, has received American Rescue Plan funds separate than what the county has. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay. Is there any?
I don't know if they've all received them yet, but they were all.
But they will, they're all.
They were all scheduled to receive them.
Yes, okay. Is there any thought given to or any plan to coordinate any of that activity with what the county is trying to do so there's not a duplication of effort? And some of the projects that I've heard brought up here?
That is an excellent question. We haven't actually touched base or spoken with the municipalities yet to see what their plans are.
Okay. And also, in reading this plan that the county put out in Section 1.3, there was a great deal of discussion or talk about inequitable outcomes going forward and talk about previous capital expenditures and how they benefited different parts of the county over other parts of the county. I've lived in this county a long time. I don't ever recall seeing any capital project in Concord Township. And Concord Township in particular was mentioned in the report with a comparison to the city of Chester. So it would be very illuminating to hear what these capital projects are that supposedly contributed to the inequitability that existed in the past. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Mayfield.
Mr. Lazarus, your PC is like in the way.
Sorry?
It's in the way. All right, thank you. Zaleen Mayfield, 801 Barkley Street, Chester, PA. Thank you, sir. Appreciate that. We've heard a lot of things tonight as to funding and where the funding should go at. And I'm going to reference a point that the gentleman just brought up from the county's website talking about the ARPA funds. And it does talk about promoting equitable outcomes. What it referenced was that Concord and Chester, PA. And in Concord, the life expectancy of a resident is 86.2 years. In the city of Chester, our life expectancy is 68.3 years. So that alone is a huge disparity as far as equity, equity. And I think that one of the first things we need to deal with is health equity and in reference to the ARP funds. One of the things that I think when we talk about infrastructure that no one has talked about or wants to talk about is the aging water pipes in the city of Chester. I ride through a lot of communities, and every day they're digging up and replacing pipes and putting in new pipes and to ensure that their drinking water is safe. It's being transported safely, and it's coming out of the spigot safely. I think that part of these funds needs to be designated to do a study on the pipes in the city of Chester since it is the oldest community. And we lack the capital to address that infrastructure area. I think it is absolutely critical because we don't want to, we do not want to wind up being the next Flint when it comes to our water supply. Okay? And I think that is just an assessment on diverting even more of the feces from this Delaware County to come into the city of Chester to Delcor. As you know, Delcor is a sewage treatment facility. They also burn the sludge. Currently, we take half of the county's feces, and it is designated that they will increase their capacity for the city of Chester to receive 100% of the crap that is flushed down the toilet in Delaware County. Part of those funding should go into explore other options to make sure that that is not a continuation or it does not happen. There are other things that you can do and to divert feces and sludge and having Delcor burn the sludge in the city of Chester. If the intent is to improve the lives of the most vulnerable populations in Delaware County, I would say that the city of Chester qualifies on that. As I said, the mortality rate in the city of Chester comparable to other areas in the county is really abysmal. So I think that there, what would benefit my community is that there is not a mobile unit, but there are satellite community health centers where people who lack proper healthcare insurance. And I think it should be funded from this act. I think that is exactly what its purpose was. If we need to improve the health of a community, let's do preventive screening. Let's do diabetes testing. Let's have nurses where people can walk in or nursing students to have their blood pressure checked. Let's have a one-stop shop in satellite areas within the city of Chester, one on the east side and one on the west side. I think that this money would best serve and attempt to do some preventive care in the city of Chester. So people don't have to wait until they're so sick until they wind up in the emergency room. If we make those things accessible. We're doing it now for COVID testing. It could be better. Maybe somebody would be more agreeable to go into a center knowing.
Madam Chair, the speaker's time has expired.
You got to give a one-minute warning. But I think that those things are beneficial to our communities. Wherever there's poor health, I think that Dr. Teller, that, you know, that needs to really be explored. Thank you so much. One-minute warning, please.
Mr. Hinson?
Thursday. Good evening. My name is Leon Hinson. This is my wife Valerie. We live at 415 East 12th Street in Chester. We run a, well, we own a mentoring program called Creating the Bridge. We launched our version of the program on September 11th, just recently. We impact the lives of young people between the ages of seven and 18. For five years prior to that, we were running a program at Life and Christ Ministries in Chester called Generation of Destiny. When we were a part of Generation of Destiny, when we ran Generation of Destiny, we had, I guess, as many as about 16 kids. What we would do is we would meet every two weeks. We provide free transportation. We would provide food for free. We basically came out of our pockets. We would get donations from other people every now and then, sometimes the other mentors. It's a co-ed program. We even got donations from Corey Long and Ruth Moten. They've been, they've been guests of ours, and they've assisted us in what we've done. Our program, what we tried to make sure we did was we gave the kids the understanding that adults do care. They're not out there by themselves. Also, we had many different topics that were relevant to them. We would show them the importance of making a decision, how each decision that you make is crucial and not to be afraid to do so. We made sure that they had their own voice, that if there was a problem, they could reach out to us. There were times where 11 o'clock at night, we're getting phone calls because they're being displaced or something of that nature. Or hungry, and we would be there for them. Some of our other topics, we, in fact, we had, we discussed during the pandemic, we had drug and alcohol counseling. We even had domestic violence conversations with them because kids don't understand that. They need to understand that that's something that happens. And to be able to be comfortable to discuss that with somebody because you never know how it's affecting them directly or even indirectly. During the pandemic, we went from being able to meet in person and doing everything via Zoom, and we were getting as many as 500 views every two weeks. But what we noticed was adults were watching, and they were paying attention. And what it's even done for us is it's allowed us to start a new component that we're about to launch on October 5th, where it's going to be an adult program as well. What we want to do is continue to impact the lives, not only in Chester, but now we're located in Brookhaven. We want to reach out to Brookhaven, Parkside, Chester, and Lower Chichester in particular, but anywhere else that people want to be a part of us because we see the need for both children and for adults. But also, we understand that financially, we can't do but so much on our own. And we feel as though because of that, you all could be an impact to us and to the community. We want to eventually grow to a point where we're working with the district attorney and others. In fact, we've had Judge Dawn Van come down and speak to us, and we're going to set up a meeting with her soon. So we can partner up so this way, instead of it being a situation where kids are going and getting locked up where they just need a place to go and talk to and open up. Or even in some cases with adults, the same thing. We can be that place for them. But we utilize forms such as this to become better known and better understood. And we hope that you all will allow us to continue to be an impact in the community with your assistance.
Thank you.
Any questions for us? All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Robert Jarra, 45 East Greenwood Avenue, Lansdowne, PA. Here to ask for the support of County Council as it with regarding the Lansdowne Theater. The Lansdowne Theater is a project of the Historic Lansdowne Theater Corporation, which is a nonprofit organization that was formed to restore the theater and bring it back to its time and when it was built in 1927. Unfortunately, Matt Schultz, our executive director, who knows every artifact and every inch of the building and the history, was unable to be with us tonight. So I serve as president of the all-volunteer board and just wanted to give a little bit of highlights as to what this project means to Lansdowne. It is an economic development project through the arts. What we have been able to do within the last 12 years, we have been able to secure the building. We purchased it and we secured it, and right now it is moving towards restoration. We have secured a tenant, which will be B R E Presents, which will bring live acts to the theater. Those that are familiar with the Keswick, those acts that will come to the Keswick will be now coming to the Lansdowne Theater. What does that mean? That means there'll be about 100,000 people coming into Lansdowne on an annual basis. That means with during construction, there'll be close to 100 jobs being created on the site, and it also means about another 80 jobs on a permanent basis once the theater gets up and running. We have support from Congresswoman Scanlon and also Senator Casey in the earmarks that are coming through, and we asked your support. I know we only have five minutes, but I wanted to bring us Hassan, who is our financial person, to kind of describe the financing that is kind of complex that comes into play. So Hassan?
Hassan Nasrutullah. I'm working with the Lansdowne Theater, with the Historic Lansdowne, and I'm really happy to see that we were listed in that schedule that we saw earlier. It's a $16 million project, so any funding that we get from you is a big leverage. If we receive a $2 million support from you, that's eight times leveraging that it'll do. The project has the bank loan in place, has a historic tax credit in place with an investor in place. It has rack beef financing in it, and of course, the two, hopefully, we're hopeful the two earmarks will come through. So the last slice of financing is what we're requesting from you. And as Bob said, it's immediate impact. It's going to affect the negative effects of COVID, meaning people, as they're cycling through this facility, it'll immediately impact during construction stage. People will buy lunches, the workers will be on, on Main Street. And same thing after it's up and running, it'll affect and help the local businesses to be positively affected by the traffic it will bring through. So we really hope that we can see downtown Lansdowne come alive. And I think I heard some conversations here about regional perspective. This really will affect the whole region. The support that we have from Senator Casey and Mary G. Scanlon's office shows that they recognize that small-town USA needs these kinds of economic reactivation, and I think this is what this will do. And our funding will directly affect and help reverse some of the damages done by the shutdown and all that we saw. Thank you. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Savino.
Dominic Savino, 4700 Drexelbrook Drive, managing partner at the Drexelbrook. And thank you for the Centurion luncheon last week. It's always a great event. My boss was 92 when he passed away of COVID, and that was his favorite event. He used to love coming to that one. I'm here to, and by the way, the Lansdowne Theater is a great project, and just to show the development with that, we were approached by the Lansdowne Theater to partner with our hotel for the people who would be coming in, the hundreds of thousands of people that they will bring in. And that's sort of the trickle-down effect when you have performing arts or restaurants or hospitality. It's the trickle-down effect of one business supports the other. I want to thank the Commerce Center because we did get a grant the first time around through Delco Strong, and that's what I'm here to advocate for is the replenishment of Delco Strong in whatever shape or form you could possibly do it, whether it's revolving loans or whatever the case may be. It's not over for us. Our basic business plan is to survive, rebuild, and then thrive. You know, unfortunately, we're still in the survival mode, and I think the biggest thing that affects us now is the lack of workforce in the entry-level position. And I know that there's great programs that you have involved with the, with working with the unions and the trades and the state wants, you know, high-quality workers, and there's those businesses out there that really need the entry level, and we need a lot of them. If you look around the county, there isn't any business that doesn't have a Help Wanted sign on it that's a hospitality business, to the point where restaurants are now closing on Mondays, they're pairing back their hours. I happen to be part of the trifecta, so Drexelbrook is a large gathering event center, you know that. We were restricted all year in a capacity. We normally seat 1,200, we were down to 100. So it's not really a good business model. And then the hotels were shut down, business travel is still very limited. And then restaurant, our restaurant never really got a chance to get off the ground, but it's doing better now. And with all the restrictions, we don't know what's coming, the Delta variant, we don't know if travel bans will affect us, we don't know whether mask mandates will go back into place. We don't know whether you're going to have to show your vaccination card to get into our restaurant. I'm sure you might have heard the story up in New York of a young hostess who was assaulted because she asked for a vaccination card from a group of people, and they assaulted her for that. And who wants to work in that type of position? So the other things we face are, and we don't want to be, I read your report where 26% of your tax revenue comes from commercial. We'd like to stay as part of that 26%. I don't want to be the part that goes out. We've been in business continuously since 1950, so we consider ourselves to be a pillar. I'm advocating on behalf of the rest of the hospitality community who, it's not your fault, we didn't get the RRF money because we are not a minority-owned or a veteran-owned business. Of the 6,000 or so applications, only 3,500 were given the RRF, and I believe in Delaware County, only 140 got it out of the thousands of restaurants that are in Delaware County. So that's a different problem for the federal government, but it does trickle down into the county level. The problem's not going to go away on its own. It needs attention. The hospitality and tourism community is vital to any county to bring people in, to stay vibrant, to, and, you know, people look to us all the time, supporting the local softball teams, supporting the local charities, have your event with us, you know, reduce, we do everything that we can to make it righteous for everyone else. And the chamber, when Steve Byrne talks, I serve on his board for Visit Delco, and I also serve on Trish's board for the Delco Chamber. So I'm all about economic development, and partnerships are really what it's all about in one business helping the other. And we, you know, when we're not doing events at Drexelbrook, that means that bands, photographers, DJs, cake people, dress people, valet companies, food service, we can't buy, one of our things is we try and buy as local as we can. If you've been to our restaurant, all of our draft beers come from Delaware County or Chester County. We try and keep it very local and support. So I guess the ask is, if you can throw a little money to the restaurants and hospitality community, we would love that, and thank you very much. Any questions?
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you. Mr. Byrne?
Good evening, Council, and thank you very much for this time. Steve Byrne, 1501 North Providence Road and Media. I am the executive director of Visit Delco, PA, the tourism promotion agency for Delaware County. And as Dominic just gave you a lot of information on the hospitality industry, one of the things I heard tonight several times is that the ARP funding is meant to address negative economic impacts caused by the public health emergency. And I don't think anybody can argue that the hospitality industry was one of the hardest hit during the pandemic. Perception is now that we're back and healthy and striving, and nothing could be farther from the truth. Just with the, with the labor shortage added on there, it just trickled down. Restaurants are closing, as Dominic said. Winter months are coming, which is going to be changing the outdoor dining situation. Our hotels, we have general managers that are, that are cleaning rooms right now because they don't have people to work in the hotels. They're capping their occupancy rate night, right now at, at certain number of rooms per night so that they can serve who is staying there. Corporate travel is starting to come back very, very slowly. We don't know if it'll ever come back to the level it was pre-pandemic. When you ask people what their plan is, it's a simple one-word answer: survival. And as Dominic just said, you start with survival and then go to rebuild. And right now, we're still in survival. One of the things that was printed on the website for the recovery plan put out by the county, it mentioned that one of the largest areas of revenue risk is the income it receives from the airport, gaming, and gas receipts. And this is what I'm here to speak about, is promoting tourism. We are, it's been, it's been proven that promoting tourism is a revenue generator. In 2017, PRLA, Pennsylvania Restaurant and Lodging Association commissioned a study that found a three-to-one return on your investment for every dollar spent in tourism. To give you some statistics, and I'll go back to 2019, which was our last decent year here with tourism, Delaware County hosted 5.1 million visitors, and by visitors, it's anybody coming in from 50 miles and outside. That led to $781 million in visitor spending, 14,000 jobs, $103 million in state and local taxes, and on top of that was 623 million in total wages, or 2,900 for every household in Delaware County. I was asked by several hotels, to Dominic's point, to see about extending the Delco Strong program, but I also put out a request, a plan to submit a promotion, which was going to start in this fall and go into the holiday seasons, combining tourism with small businesses and small business spending, like what we did last year, we'd keep the cheer here, promoting businesses to spend local, and combining that with tourism. So I would change that a little bit since we're already into the fall and continue that, but then go into the spring with the, with the promotion. Just because it, it just shows by promoting tourism, you're driving revenue to the county, and that is our mission at Visit Delco, is to drive revenue to the county. It's, it's an investment, but one that will have a return. And you talked, you heard statistics from Lansdowne Theater, that's another project that, that is coming as well, that's going to, just 100,000 people for that place alone. Thank you. I don't know if you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Mrs. Sheehan?
Hello, I'm Frances Sheehan. I live at 14 Amherst Avenue in Swarthmore, Pennsylvania. On behalf of the Board of Directors and Staff of the Foundation for Delaware County, we appreciate that you were consulting with the community to learn more about how the American Rescue Plan funds might best be spent to move Delaware County forward. As the fully accredited community foundation serving Delaware County with 70 staff in four sites, providing public health and grant-making services as well as philanthropic expertise, we understand the tremendous needs of our citizens and communities on so many fronts. We applaud Council for all you were already doing to establish a county health department, a centralized food bank, and to expand open space in Delaware County, and so much more. I'd like to touch on four recommendations the foundation has for the use of American Rescue Plan funds. In each of these cases, we encourage you to use these funds to position the county to draw down other funding, whether it is federal, state, or philanthropic support now and in the future. Leveraging these dollars for greater impact through careful strategic planning is critical as we are unlikely to see funding at this level again in the foreseeable future. First, I understand you are already planning to use some of the funds to augment state funding for the establishment of the new health department. We urge you to continue to include the community in planning the health issues this new department will tackle. Discussion so far has heavily emphasized the need for maternal and children's public health programs like our own Healthy Start, Nurse Family Partnership, and WIC nutrition programs. Partnering with these programs to explore opportunities for expansion into underserved geographic communities, expanding to serve more clients in need across the county, particularly more children in the two- to five-year-old age group, and making sure that women, fathers, and families in need are aware of the opportunities presented by these programs, all are worth funding. Second, we urge you to use some of this funding to address the lack of affordable housing in Delaware County. Data shows that one of the most significant factors impacting health is the availability of safe, stable, affordable housing, particularly for low-income children. The county has done a phenomenal job moving rental assistance funds out the door in the last several months, and we don't disagree that exploring the use of ARPA funds for mortgage assistance might be a good idea. But we also need a robust safety net that is connected to the health department with more housing inspectors, and we need to bring more affordable housing developers to the table who have experience in this complicated arena. Data shows that in order to afford a two-bedroom unit at fair market value in Delaware County, which is approximately $1,260, an individual making minimum wage would need to work the equivalent of 3.3 full-time jobs. This makes safe, affordable housing out of reach for many families that desperately need it. Third, when the COVID-19 pandemic hit, we responded by establishing the Delaware County COVID-19 Response Fund, and we're gratified with the number of generous donors who stepped forward to support the nonprofits in our community who faced possible, faced possible closure due to the pandemic at a time that they were needed more than ever. As we watched Hurricane Ida devastate our neighboring communities this month, we thought of the future climate-related crises that will inevitably come our way. As Delaware County's community foundation, we know we will be called upon to respond immediately to give generous residents the opportunity to help again. But any philanthropic support that we provide and facilitate depends on having a strong emergency services department and a volunteer citizen corps that is poised and ready should they be needed on a dime. 2,000-strong citizen corps is a jewel of Delaware County, matched by no other county in our state. We stand ready at the foundation to establish a fund immediately should another crisis occur, but we must have a strong emergency services department to partner with, and that includes a strong volunteer citizen corps. Lastly, as County Council President Zidek often says, data must drive all our decisions going forward. In the ARPA recovery plan, you emphasize that showing evidence of the effective use of ARPA funds will be done with a data-based approach. We applaud you for that emphasis. One of the challenges Delaware County has had, though, is that data is available within departments, not, not all of which is strict, are strictly health-related, but is, it is often siloed without the staff, staffing available to bring that data together across departmental barriers for useful purposes. The county has strong departments with, thank you.
Just to let you know.
That was five minutes?
Yes.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Sheehan.
Good evening. I'm Jim McLoughlin, Rolling Road, Springfield. I am, please wipe a number of the, of the ideas that are presented here, but I'm, I'm opposed to a number of the items noted in the, in the initial presentation, as they may represent needed expenses but are unrelated to the damage from or issues uncovered by COVID. Operating expenses of any kind exclusive of direct revenue losses should not be included here. Staff. Staff needs to see these funds, seems to see these funds as a giant candy jar, ready to satisfy every pet project. I never look at such events as found money, meaning we can just focus on short-term benefits as if, even if COVID is hopefully a relatively short-term impact, clearly compounded by the lack of a county health department, which I'm very pleased we are going to achieve. We must always use our government funds regardless of source as investments in and for lasting, self-sustaining impact and benefit to the physical and economic health and well-being of our community. Investing in the health of our community is important, but these funds are not to be used for normal operations, no matter how squishy our budget forecasts are. Funding issues planned before COVID should be off the table. One topic that was not planned was environmental injustice, which received no attention in the previous administration. It's been documented that COVID-like respiratory risk rises with even small increases in particulate levels. The placement of incineration and other environmentally harmful industries, all within a few square miles, has brought deep, long-term negative economic and health impacts to that community, the community being Chester, a community that county planners have identified as a key part of economic growth for all of Delco. Five municipalities representing 21% of the county so far have passed zero-waste resolutions, urging an end to this toxic relationship for the residents of Chester. These resolutions have called for the county to support incentivized zero-waste programs that could divert upwards of 60% of our waste from disposal, saving money sustainably and protecting public health. As I've become more engaged in this topic, I have been pleased to read about processes for material recovery, biological treatment, waste digestion, and others. Good science can guide us, and thankfully, we'll have a health department to guide us as well. As we consider our options, there are opportunities to study and pilot these creative strategies supported with these funds through the health department or their role. Done right, these programs save money and sustain themselves. I don't expect miracles, having spent time leading community development. I'm familiar with important analytical steps needed to develop these important plans. I would not be surprised if up to 5% of these funds were applied to such efforts. Assessing the flow of energy, transportation, supplies, logistics, and money are important elements along with assessing the related infrastructure. Again, this is important work, and it can involve the community in many ways. And if ESI is already doing this, great. We can save those funds here. I also realize every injustice cannot be fixed with $110 million, but when we have the chance to both build our economic strength, improve general wellness, and address past injustices, we have a great obligation to do so. I urge our council to identify and prioritize proposed projects toward the maximum benefit for lasting, sustainable economic and wellness benefit in the most ethical, transparent, and responsible ways possible. One thing we cannot do is to use these funds for planned growth of county services or facilities. Thank you very much.
Ms. Farlong?
Good evening, Council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. My name is Mary Ann Furlong. I'm the Township Manager for Chad's Ford, a little municipality out far in western Delaware County, about as far out western Delaware County as you can get. Chad's Ford, of course, I'm sure many of you realize, is the home of many national treasures. We're the home of the Village area, which is on the national, is a National Historic District. Also, the Brandywine Battlefield, a National Historic Site. North and South Creek Roads, a National Scenic Byway. We're home to the Brandywine River Museum, or I sadly say what's left of the Brandywine River Museum, and Conservancy. Not only a national destination, a huge economic benefit to the entire county, but an international destination. And sadly to say, we are now the site of the remnants of Tropical Storm Ida, September 1st and 2nd. On behalf of the Board of Supervisors of Chad's Ford, I'd like to thank you very much for your proactive response to what we've gone through the past few weeks. The help that Larry Bach and Tim Boyce have offered from Delaware County Emergency Services has been outstanding, and I have a feeling it's just the beginning of a beautiful relationship, quite frankly. The establishment of a FEMA, PIMA, Small Business Association Resource Center, Disaster Resource Center, Recovery Center at our township facility at Ten Ring Road, I'm sorry, Ten Ring Road, Chad's Ford, PA, is just an enormous benefit to not only our residents, but quite frankly, a number of residents from Chester County who have taken advantage of that service also. They offer a wide, wide variety of benefits that I quite frankly never even dreamt that they offered. They're wonderful people to work with. We enjoy hosting them very, very much. No matter how many historic places the township has to offer, our citizens are our most valuable resource and a prime consideration and a prime import to the supervisors as of the health, safety, and welfare of those residents. If this were the first time our residents had been displaced and our businesses closed because of flooding, I probably wouldn't be here this evening, but it hasn't. Over the past few decades, this issue has become worse and worse and worse. Just over a year ago, in fact, we suffered the remnants of what was then Tropical Storm Isaiahus, August 4th. On August 7th, that very same week, it was a Friday, I know it had to be the remnants of a tornado that went through Centerville, Delaware. Literally had road surfaces washed away, road shoulders washed away. A part of a roadway in the township, a culvert washed away, stranding residents who were unable to get, literally get out, drive out of their homes. There was also catastrophic flooding from that same storm in a condominium development called Painter's Crossroads. People were forced to leave their home for months, and they are looking into stream remediation to solve that problem. However, just, believe it or not, on August 25th of this year, I met with our supervisors, and after consultation, I'm going to be followed, I believe, by Ellen Ferretti, Director of the Brandywine Conservancy, Virginia Logan, the executive director of the Brandywine River Museum, Brandywine Conservancy and Museum of Art, excuse me, is here also this evening. But we had started discussions as far as what mitigation could be taken right away to stop this flooding issue. And there are a number of things that the Conservancy had studied and had issued, and had suggested. One was the removal of a dam that currently exists across the Brandywine, just north of Route 1. Another was a feasibility study to figure out the best way to remove debris that is currently in the creek, causing, of course, you know, a backup of waters in that area in a bridge a little further down, right adjacent to the River Museum. And another area of South Creek Road, right where Camley Lane comes in, which, something is going on there, nobody can quite figure out what it is, but it's an area of intense backup flooding Creek Road and causing Creek Road to close also in these events. There's little question that a permanent solution needs to be sought, and that solution isn't going to just take place in Delaware County or in Chad's Ford. It's going to be a multi-county, multi-regional, multi-municipal effort. And that will take time. It'll be very worthwhile, I feel. But there are, and we're asking you tonight in an effort with your Chad's Ford Township...
Five minutes.
...has pledged part of our American Resource Plan funding towards this effort. We are seeking additional funding also, but we would ask County Council to consider also contributing a portion of your funds to this effort. It would be nice to keep the gateway open to western Delaware County from Chester County and the opposite direction also. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Ferretti?
Good evening, everybody. My name is Ellen Ferretti. I'm Director of the Brandywine Conservancy. The Brandywine Conservancy and Museum of Art is at 1 Hoffman's Millway in Chad's Ford, and I live off South Creek Road in Chad's Ford, Delaware County. I would like to reiterate what Mary Ann Furlong just discussed and actually ask consideration of Council of her proposal. We had been talking before the flood about these various stormwater measures related to not only Chad's Ford, but the campus of the Brandywine Conservancy and Museum of Art. And the use of the funds in several items such as improved resiliency of infrastructure to severe weather events, managing stored water, and even green infrastructure. If you haven't been to the campus of the Brandywine River Museum, they're emblematic of all of these things. The museum is an economic driver. It aids in workforce retention, but it sits on the banks of the Brandywine, and right now, it needs help. So what we'd like to ask is if you would consider, and while yes, this was a flood caused by a tropical storm, it was certainly exacerbated by stormwater runoff problems in the watershed, up in the watershed. I mean, we all know that we have stormwater runoff problems, and we could see the severity and frequency of these events. We see the results of that. So we would like to ask flood relief from Council using these funds and a longer-term study, as Mary Ann had referenced, in this area to find out what is happening with the dynamic of stormwater, what practical solutions can be had to relieve these stormwater effects, and with regard to the Brandywine River Museum and the campus of the Brandywine Conservancy and Museum of Art, how can we save this world-class treasure using common sense means and the funds that are available to us now? So thank you very, very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. McCrola?
Go figure you're waiting all this time, and the person you're here with stepped out to go to the bathroom. Hi, I'm Rachel McCrola. I'm here representing Toshiba out of the King of Prussia office. However, I am a resident of Delaware County. I live at 4405 Rosemont Avenue. And we are here tonight to talk to you about neighboring counties that we are currently working with, with their ARPA funds. We are implementing software solutions to assist them with document management. It has artificial intelligence built within. It is able to integrate with GIS, NRGov, and ENCODE systems, which gives accessibility to your inspectors, your zoning, and your developers when they are out in the field, whether it be from a tablet, a PC, or a mobile device. Part of this integration with GIS or ENCODE or NRGov, it allows not only for them to see surveys, plots, address history, but it also gives them the accessibility to look at permits that are maybe not being mandated properly. I know I personally here have seen permits that have been expired for fencing or concrete. And so what this does is it takes some of those processes that are paper-intensive, and it digitizes it. You no longer have to have people coming to the county building, and that is something else that kind of leads me into our software solutions as well. I noticed, walking into the building tonight, that there doesn't seem to be any preventative measures for people having access to this building or even some of your assets, like your copier. I would have been able to walk up right now and print these from your copier right outside the store, which leads me to be a little bit concerned for the residents of Delaware County because you are not protecting yourself against people being able to come up and hack your fax line. If you remember, back in 2018, Marriott had their fax line hacked, which ended up costing them $500 million. It would be a travesty to see a resident like myself, Joe King, and the residents here have to use their taxpayer dollars to pay for ransomware or cyber breach. And we know what happens when cyber attacks happen. You lose intellectual property, data, and oftentimes, there's a hefty fee that comes associated with. The other thing I noticed on your copier is that you're still accepting paper faxes. If you are doing that, Toshiba has a solution for you. It's called Xmedias. If you are not sharing case records, developmental files, things that have pertinent private information of these residents, you are violating House Bill 1049. You should be sharing that information via encrypted email. Xmedias not only gives the capability to send encrypted emails up to five terabytes, but it also enhances digital faxing, which is amazing because you don't want to be sending paper faxes anymore. HIPAA recognizes that paper faxing is no longer considered a best practice because what happens is when you send a paper fax, it gets mixed in with all the other faxes, and now that pertinent private information gets out into the wrong hands. So if you want to ensure the safety of the data that you are sending out, you will eliminate your paper faxing and implement a digital fax solution or send secure email feature that keeps the resident's information private. So in addition to that, one of the other things we have done for a neighboring county is we recently did a complimentary assessment of all of their print environment. We were able to determine what were security threats based on the age of the machine or the open portability, but then what we did was we also came up with a plan. We were able to reduce a neighboring county's budget by $302,000 over the next three years. And I think right now, with these funds, we should look into new software solutions that are going to protect the residents of this county's information when you're sharing it as well as receiving it, but also look at means over time of how you can put money back into your budget once these funds are gone. And that is something we are willing to do for you complimentary, as we have done for neighboring counties, and we know that we are able to save them exorbitant amounts of money. Any questions? Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. King? Thank you. Mr. Long?
Good evening, Council. Good evening, Mr. Director, Mr. Solicitor. Corey Long, Founder and Executive Director of the Making a Change Group, 419 Edgemont Avenue. I really enjoyed hearing some really meaningful proposals this evening from the audience. Unfortunately, the proposal that I have to request support for is more of a matter of life and death. I'm here to propose for support for the Gun Violence Prevention Initiative and also the Criminal Justice Reform. The city of Chester has seen a reduction in gun violence over the past year, but previous to this year, last year, we've experienced exactly what the city of Philadelphia has experienced, an uptick in our homicides in Chester, including a seven-year-old, including a 13-year-old, including a 15-year-old, and the list goes on. See, Chester is only 6% of Delaware County. We have about 34,000 residents, and as you know, the county has about 564,000 residents. We're only 6% of the county, but we experience 75% of the county's entire homicide rate on average. So over the last decade, the city of Chester has had over 200 gun violence homicides. That's more than the combined total of all the municipalities in the county of Delaware. I heard Ms. Sheehan talk a little bit about the data that Chairman Zidick wants to make sure that we follow now, to be fiscally responsible. So if we're going to be fiscally responsible and follow the data, look up the amount of homicides that the entire county has had outside of the city of Chester, and it will not total over 200. So I'm here, again, to ask that you support gun violence initiative. The $1 million that DA Stolzheimer asked for, that's less than 1% of the ARPA funds, and to me, that's just a drop in the bucket. I spent some time as the Anti-Violence Coordinator for the city of Chester, an appointed position from 2010 to 2012. During that time, I went to the city of Los Angeles and met with the deputy mayor there to see what they were doing to reduce gun violence. And they started a program called GRID. It stands for Gang Reduction and Youth Development. They increased their youth development programs, and that's what aided to the social determinant of their gang reduction violence. So in the city of Chester, there's a group of us, well, there's a group called Exit Six. It's a group of youth development programs... It's a group of youth development programs, recreation programs, that serve close to 1,000 young people over the course of a year. That's about 20% of all the school-aged children. There's about 6,000 school-aged children in the city of Chester. There's a group called Exit Six. One of those groups particularly practiced at the county's park, Camp Upland. And there's no lights during the evening when they practice. They use the car headlights to rehearse, to practice during the evening. So I don't know what determines that Don Gwinella Park gets 20 million for their parks, but the groups in Chester and neighboring areas that are in our district has to practice with their car headlights. But all of those are determinants, are social determinants, from gun violence. So again, thank you for the opportunity, counsel. Please consider funding gun violence, criminal justice reform. And nowhere else have I ever seen a prosecutor and a public defender's office lobbying for the same cause in the same room on the same night. Thank you.
Ms. Javons?
Latisha Jevins, 216 North Monroe Street here in Media Borough, although I am looking for a new apartment, so if anyone has leads. But my, oh, I, my question on the funds and what I want to advocate for is, I heard people talk about workforce development, but you really can't have families and parents and working moms go back to work if the schools are not open and daycares are not open. And I would hope that part of the workforce and economic recovery could be making sure that schools can not only reopen, but stay open, and that they can get the resources, whether it's testing, or nurses, or something, whether it's through the intermediate unit, through the county, or maybe help with the school district, to stay open and to keep daycares open. Because all of the research says that what we, three-year-olds and four-year-olds are so much more impressionable than waiting till college and adulthood to, and that's no more evident than trying to teach people to wash their hands, something very COVID-related. Like preschoolers take to hand washing very well. But when it was first introduced in the 1800s, doctors who suggested that doctors should wash their hands were not. So I would hope that, and B, this pandemic has revealed a lot about education, and it's very clear that people don't understand enough science, enough math, or enough health to understand what Dr. Fauci and the other public health experts are telling us. Keeping the schools open, especially during a pandemic, would give us the ability to teach people the basics about how vaccines work, how diseases are spread, how statistics work so they can read the newspaper articles. And it would give the kids a chance to do what clearly we have failed with the adults because the adults are denying COVID and taking ivermectin and clearly not inoculated with the education to understand what is actually going on and understand the difference between medical school and a Google search, or between Dr. Fauci and some quack on the internet. And it's killing people, literally, because they're spreading rumors about the vaccine that aren't true. They're spreading rumors about masks not working that aren't true. And if we keep the schools open, we can teach people what they need to know to understand the public health experts, not only in this pandemic, but in the next pandemic. And that means funding all of our schools because all of us need to know enough to understand what Dr. Fauci is telling us, to understand the newspaper articles with the statistics and the biology and the health content, so we understand how the virus mutates and why it is so important to vaccinate soon and effectively. And until we have the schools open, the parents can't go back to work because they have to keep dropping out to monitor Zoom School, or because they don't have daycare. And we don't have a vaccine for young kids yet, so we need to have the resources for masks and tests and nurses and all that stuff until we can get a vaccine approved, like Pfizer or something, for enough young kids that we can safely keep the schools not only open, but not only reopen them, but keep them open, which happened in Indiana where my parents live, where a school opened and immediately had to shut down because of high caseloads. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Kronheim?
My name's David Kronheim. I live 1104 Colhane Street, Chester, PA. Start with the money. One of the purposes of the money was supposed to be infrastructure investments in water. I'm gonna, it wasn't mentioned if that would apply to air quality, and I think it should because you cannot have good air quality without good water quality. I'm sorry, you can't have good water quality without good air quality because pollutants in the air come down in the rain, more CO2, like you have from Covanta, causes more flooding and acid rain. And with more flooding, you get more problems with your water. And the landfill, the ash getting dumped from the landfill also can get in the groundwater. All right. So from what I was watching from some of the recent meetings, seems to be two schools of thoughts to me for what to do about Covanta. One is to shut it down, and another is to put in remediation so they're actually trapping more pollutants, which apparently that plant hasn't done for 30 years. And I don't trust that they're gonna do it in the next 30 years, given the opportunity, especially since what they've spent their money on, rather than pollution control between 2014 and 2020, was $39,000 in political contributions to different Pennsylvania offices, yes.
I'm sorry, but today's meeting is about ARPA funds?
And I said, all right, well, tell me this. Can the ARP fund spend in air quality improvement?
This is in the format for question and answers for suggestions on how we can spend ARPA funding? For the comments that you have about Covanta, that would be more appropriate for Thursday's meeting? That's specifically on solid waste.
Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Ms. Kazin?
Good evening. Carol Kazin, 327 East 23rd Street. Good evening, council members and members of the public. I do want to say, I believe Councilmember Ruthers was not present for that meeting, but I believe about a month and a half ago, I came in and a lot of the things that everybody was speaking on, that they would like the funding to go to, I remember presenting that before we actually even got here in regards to the different organization. So I just wanted to bring up about, again, the rec center. And I think last time I had brought that up in the city of Chester, being able to serve the public, children especially, and our young adults with different programs. So I believe I brought up last time, there's the YES Center that's located at Overtown, which is spearheaded by Ms. Twyla Simpkins. And this YES Center used to be our previous Y. And with that building, we were able to get like a quote, at least to start off $100,000. And they were able to at least try to put in at least three levels into that building that can serve about almost 40 rooms in there. And with it being in the middle and being able to serve different programs, whether it's wellness, whether it's educating around environment, whether it's educating around financial literacy, we have heard from different community organizations that are, you know, doing work in Chester and doing tremendous jobs. But my goal is to be able to see if we can come together in that one building to provide these programs and resources in that network, that one network that can be able to help around with the gun violence. Everybody that knows me know I'm very big when it does come to gun violence and trauma, and that is work that I do, still do to this very day. I wasn't going to bring this up, but I will say that the reason why I come off frustrated, and the reason why that I have constantly came and tried to present myself to say this to you guys, is because I've put myself, me, myself, which I chose to, in situations where shootouts could have happened, and I was there, that I'm literally on the ground in the middle of people having for them to dismiss the situation. I myself had called officers. So a lot of things that I speak on, that I fight on, that I'm asking you guys to support is because I'm doing it. I'm a mother, and I'm a wife. And I sacrifice that as well to help these children because I know what it's like. We have organizations like the Chevlin Family Foundation that provide resources around drugs and alcohol. I also brought up to you guys about Recover Barriers, that I work with them as well. You know, there are so many different organizations that supply so many things that are needed. And the gun violence stems from so many trauma that people face. A lot of the addiction that is turned on is from the trauma. So until we start educating our children, until we start acknowledging, until we be able to provide them resources and these programs that can be set in, I mean, I don't know, I could be wrong, but I don't really know no community right now, even if they use their barrel hole, that does not have a rec center for children to at least go to. So we're using parks for our football team. And I fight a lot too with our young men, but then it's the young girls too, who are now being prolonged into our criminal justice system that we keep speaking on. So until we get that together, these are the issues that we're going to continue to have. And I agree with Councilmember Ruth that the mental health is real. I've been in mental health and behavioral health for over 12 years. It's not something that's new. So until we fix those problems, until we offer our children something and be able to give them something, we cannot come up with a motto and think that once we go in, it's the end of it, when they come back from reentry. We have to be able to have something that comes together, collaborating, for them to be able to find employment, and to make sure that wherever we sending them to is not just going to send them right back out the door. So it's a lot that plays a factor in it. So again, as someone that's on the ground, as someone who has stood in front of situations where I could be dead right now, again, I ask you to please take that into consideration when we're talking about a rec center and being able to provide programs. It's there. The building is there. $100,000 can help start up. A quote, we'll try to help finish doing the rest. I'm helping Ms. Twyla, we're trying to clean it out. But just help us at least open up that center so we can be able to put in these different programs so the children can learn, at least to understand, and young adults can go for help. We don't even have a WIC center now. It's in Eddie Stone because of the issues we have over there. So that right there could have been in that building, instead of me trying to go outreach and knock on different women's doors to tell them, hey, you gotta catch the bus to Eddie Stone, because they, it's the lack of communication we have. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Warren?
Hello, counsel. Thank you for offering this public comment. My name's Kearney Warren. I live at 2525 Sandy Land Street in Chester, and I would like to talk about how I see where these recovery funds can be used. First, I just want to share that according to social media today, this is motivational Monday, and I have to say that I wasn't very motivated when I woke up today because I knew that I had to come here and talk about health equity and continue to fight for justice. When I think about my 96-year-old grandmother, we're still in the same fight. And right now, when a toilet flushes here in Media, the waste goes to Chester where I live. The western half of the county's toilets, sinks, showers, and stormwater drains all are directed to my home, Chester. Delcora Sewerage Treatment Plant in Chester also trucks in industrial waste from multiple states. They separate the solids from liquids. The liquids, which are also called effluents, are now used as cooling water at Covanta. The remaining sewage sledge is burned in a sewage sledge incinerator in Delcora, sitting just a black of-
Sorry, so this is about ARPA funding and how we can use the ARPA funding, or?
Yes.
Okay. Are you going to discuss kind of that versus just solid waste?
Yes. Can I?
Yep, go ahead.
I can finish? Okay. Because this is about our health equity, right? Infrastructure is also health, am I correct? Okay. So what I'm speaking about affects, you know, to some of you, this may just be a financial cost, but this is a health cost to myself and the residents in Chester. And so what I'm speaking about is infrastructure, but I just have to explain what's happening so that you understand how it's affecting our infrastructure in Chester. So I don't even know where I was at. So not only does all of Delcora's trash come to the block in Chester where Covanta is to be burnt, but half of this county's feces does as well. There are the first and third largest air polluters in Chester, and they are the hotspot of environmental racism that Delaware County commits in the city where I live. Now, Delcora plans to make this situation worse. The eastern half of Delcora's toilets flush in the direction of Philadelphia. Because Delcora doesn't want to pay, here we go about the cost with these funds, because Delcora doesn't want to pay the high price of upgrading Philadelphia Sewerage Treatment Plant where the eastern Delcora sewage goes, now they plan to build a big tunnel to Chester, doubling the sewage pipe to Chester. So literally, they want the entire county to be using the bathroom in Chester. This is completely unacceptable, vile, and outrageous. Delcora evaluated four options. The two cheapest options were different versions of piping the Eastern Service Area Sewerage to Chester. The most expensive was staying with Philly. However, the fourth option is to build a new sewage treatment plant for the eastern half of the county. This would likely be done on unused industrial land near the airport, far from where anyone lives. However, in Chester and Traynor, about 3,500 people live within a mile of Delcora and have to smell them and breathe in the sledge from the incinerator's pollution. 70% of these residents are black, and the average household income is $26,000. Where a new treatment plant will likely go, no one lives within a mile. Delcora projects that a new sewage treatment plant will cost $140 million more than their tunnel to Chester plan. Financed over 30 years, that increased cost amounts to about $8 a year per person to do the right thing. The county could use its power under Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act to instruct Delcora not to double the dumping on Chester and pursue a new treatment plant. Using the ARP money, the county could also contribute toward this project, making the financial support subject to building this new plant in eastern Delco. As some of you probably already know, I'm currently running for city council in Chester, and I am on the ballot as a Green candidate. One thing I've learned from the Green Party is that they have pioneered some interesting things. In New York, in an area in New York, when a Green Party mayor was in power, they built a wetland system to process the effluent from their sewage treatment plant, reducing the chemical pollution impacts that would otherwise go into our river.
Time has expired.
This is one possibility that the county might explore, and I'm excited to see that the county's RFP to develop its new solid waste plan already includes exploring this. Thank you.
Ms. Zirin?
It's pronounced Ms. Zirin. Patricia Zirin. I live at 1104 Colhane Street in Chester, Pennsylvania. If you think of all the people and all the programs that have been discussed tonight as a giant baby, we are washing that baby in filthy water. If we don't use, if we don't wash the baby in clean water, he or she will end up being hard to control, hard to educate, and challenged in how to properly live in the world. The filth the baby is exposed to is in our control. Animals don't urinate nor defecate where they sleep, but we do. This issue is related to the COVID overall health of our community, the vulnerability to outcomes of COVID is increased due to what I am about to address. People of color and those seeking to change an exploitive and oppressive system have disproportionately- been repressed, not represented by this incinerator and its, this Covanta incinerator and its usage decision makers in the city of Chester, PA. In fact, since the Covanta incinerator has been in operation, it has made Chester the poster child for environmental racism, albeit the Covanta Love Canal. One of the most pronounced aspects of white supremacy remains the belief in the superiority of European ideals and ways of life. White supremacy ignored the knowledge and insights of people of color for centuries. This includes environmental, and this is why I feel using the money to make it possible to stop burning the county's trash in Chester by May 2022. It's for the children upon whom we are currently specifying by writing in putrid ink their biosphere where they must live. It is inevitably, and it is unendurable, and we can transform it now. Yes, we have the power within this infusion of money to exculpate the children, the children's fate, into an environment into which they will gladly bring their children into the world cleanly, clearly, safely, and lovingly. Covanta's facility in Chester is the nation's largest waste incinerator, burning close to their
Sorry, are you going to bring this back to ARPA funding?
What?
Is this going to come back to ARPA funding?
Yeah.
Because we are going to be talking about
I want you to use the funding to shut the plant down.
I don't know how that would be possible.
Why?
That's not a use of the funding to shut down a facility that we have no direct, we can't just pay the money to shut it down. I'm sorry, I really, I have full sympathy for the importance of the issue, I just want to make sure that we're on subject for tonight, because we have an entire evening Thursday dedicated to it.
So you want me to talk on Thursday and not tonight?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Bill?
My name is Ruth Moten, M-O-T-E-N. I live at 2250 Blue Ball Avenue in Upper Chichester. I want to thank you all for having this meeting to hear all of the input as far as the American Rescue Plan Act. This pandemic has affected everyone. The world became a sinking ship. Everyone in the public, private, and government sector joined together to implement various programs. They provided lifeboats just as if we were on a ship. Women, children, and the disabled are provided with lifeboats first. Low-income, fixed-income, and unemployment people got access to those programs first. Now, well, over a year with the funds that we're talking about and pertaining to this evening left, it's time for the men and the crew to have access to the lifeboats. It's time to open up the programs to everyone regardless of income. As you get together and you discuss as far as what you're going to do with the money, I'm just asking for you, please to remember that we all were affected by the shutdown. Those who may not have needed help programs before the pandemic definitely, definitely need help now. The pre-pandemic requirements and needs are not the same needs today. Many of the programs that are out there, there are income requirements. Many people have, they are homeless, but in order to get help, homelessness has to be living out on the street, under a bridge, something of that nature. If you're living and sleeping on someone's couch in your basement, you're not considered, then everyone, you know, thinks that you're fine. And then whatever program that's out there that could have helped someone, now they no longer qualify for. So that's just all that I ask that you remember, that we all were sent home, we all were affected in many different ways, shapes, and forms. Thank you.
Ms. Dulce Amor?
Thank you for pronouncing my name correctly. Hi, Council, thank you for allowing us to be here to give public comment. I also want to thank the first responders who are here. Thank you for everything that you do, and you definitely deserve some of these funds. Ashley Dulcimore, sorry, 1151 Oakwood Drive. Kind of short, let me adjust this a little bit, okay. As I reviewed the recovery plan on the Delaware County website, section 1.3 caught my attention the most. This section labeled as promoting equitable outcomes talks about differential outcomes and health inequality of life for Delaware County residents. If you truly would like to promote equitable outcomes in this county, one of the most important things you can do is use the funds to help combat longstanding environmental racism. Children have no control over where they grow up, but they deserve to breathe clean air and live a life as long as the children in the wealthier municipalities. There are three initiatives that I'm advocating for these funds to be used for, and they fall under the different categories that are listed on the county website, so yes, this is all relevant. Thank you. One is to use the money to make it possible to stop burning the county's trash in Chester by May 1, 2022, smoothing the transition to using landfills directly and reducing Delco's waste. Another is to stop Delcora from doubling the amount of literal crap sent to Chester. The western half of the county sewage goes there, and the sewage sludge is burned in a sewage sludge incinerator. To avoid paying high costs to Philly for processing the eastern half of the county sewage, Delcora wants to build a tunnel to pipe the other half of the county sewage to Chester as well. This is the cheapest of the options, but this infrastructure money could help cover the cost of a new sewage treatment plant in Tinicum. And the last is to end Delcora's use of incineration to burn sewage sludge and industrial waste that they truck in from several states. This money could help replace the sewage sludge incinerator in Chester with an anaerobic digester, which would be far less polluting. Thank you.
Mr. Ewell?
I live in Philadelphia with Energy Justice Network, and we have many members here in Delaware County. As the pandemic was starting to hit in full swing in April 2020, there was a study that came out from Harvard, and that study talked about how particulate matter in the air increases deaths from COVID, even a small increase increases deaths from COVID by 15%. We've also seen studies that black people are hit the hardest by this and are suffering disproportionately deaths from COVID. Now, the pollutant that they talked about in that study, particulate matter, is something that Covanta's incinerator puts out more than any incinerator in the country. And yes, I know you don't want to hear about incinerators tonight, but this is about public health, and this is about ARP funds. As the pandemic continued, sorry, losing my place here. Yes, one of the things that we'd like to see, and I'm going to not focus on Covanta here, but just the last point on that, is that the money from this could help smooth the transition. We have studied this and figured out roughly how much money it would take to end the Covanta contract right away and move to landfill. And we know that the few years of funding that that will enable, say you use the amount that you use for Don Guanola, that will buy you about three to four years of transition time to then adopt the zero-waste systems that will reduce waste enough that it'll be back to what you're normally paying. So in other words, this is not an ongoing thing, it's not a program expense you're being asked to do that's going to not last more than a few years, this is a transitional thing that is infrastructure and public health. Now sewer infrastructure is one of the key areas that the ARP funds talked about, is straight up said water sewer broadband, so like sewer, okay, very relevant, that's why you're hearing about Delcora tonight. Delcora currently pipes, as you've heard, half the county's sewage to Chester, and the other half goes to Philadelphia. They are talking about this tunnel because they don't want to pay Philadelphia, they want to tunnel it to Chester.
If I could just interrupt?
Yes.
It's not that we don't want to pay Philadelphia. Philadelphia does not want our waste after the current contract is over, because they have their own long-term control plan, and they need the capacity in their system. So I think you need to back off from the idea that somehow that's an option, it is not an option. I just want to put that out there.
Sure, I'll get my time back, but they did list that as one of four options in a presentation they just gave last week. So whatever they're saying is different from what you're saying, but I don't disagree with you, no one's advocating to stay with Philadelphia. All I'm saying is that this is relevant to the things that you can help invest in, and there are other answers, one of the four, as Kearney pointed out, is to build a new sewage treatment plant so you're not doubling the amount of sewers that has to go to Chester. And that is less expensive than staying with Philly, so good option to support. Now, we know that they have an incinerator at Delcora, they're the third-largest air polluter in Chester, of course Covanta's first, and incineration's the most expensive and polluting way to manage waste. We need to move away from that, there's been talk by Delcora to move away by going to pyrolysis, which is a more expensive form of incineration, that's also experimental and usually fails technically and economically. And instead of letting them do that, it'd be far better to invest in digestion. And I'm sure you're familiar with that, Christine, that is something that is a much better option, I know on the Solid Waste Authority Board, John Butler's been pushing that as well, one of the few things we agree on. And that doesn't involve burning the sludge, it just basically compost in a vessel so that you can burn the gases that come off of it, but you don't have to turn all that pollution, you don't have to turn all that waste into pollution, most of it is still left and can then be landfill safely. So there's a lot that Delcora is doing that needs course correction, and what we recommend is that you use some of this funds to kind of require them to do the other things that they ought to be doing. Of course, you can also use your authority under the Pennsylvania Municipal Authorities Act to directly order them to do or not do certain projects. So there are five things that we're recommending. One, ask them to end the plan, I know you've already been litigating this, but make this a condition or an order now that we know you have the authority to do this. Two, not sell to Aqua, not privatize. Number two, build a new sewage treatment plant, likely would be in Tinicum on the land near the airport, instead of tunneling it to Chester. Three would be stop trucking in liquid waste from all over the region, and especially don't allow them to be taking fracking waste or PFAS waste, which I know has been seeking to be burned in sewage sludge and trash incinerators around the country. Number four would be to replace the sewage sludge incinerator with digestors, not pyrolysis, and use the digestion at the new plant as well.
Speaker's time has expired.
And finally, the last one is to explore using the digestors at a new plant to also process the organic fraction of municipal waste, so that you have a zero-waste solution on the backend that will avoid having the climate impacts and the cost of trucking additional weight to landfills, because if you digest it first, waste less, and it's much lower impact on the landfill community. Thank you.
Mr. Stoddard?
Good evening, my name is Blaine Stoddard, I run BFW Group, we're a construction project management company at the Philadelphia Navy Yard. I want to, because of the pain I've seen that
Mr. Stoddard, can you just give your address?
Oh, my address is 4605 South Broad Street, Philadelphia Navy Yard, 19112. I'm going to be as relevant as possible, and it's good to see the honorable council people, the city solicitor and staff. I'm about to talk about a project, when looking at your plan, it provides, it can use redevelopment assistance, it's directly involved in public health, this is not, I didn't see this in the plan, but it will provide affordable housing, I saw this in the plan, it will have an equitable outcome, it will be self-sufficient, and it will have significant impact. I am the representative, the owner's representative for Silver Care. Silver Care is a 300,000-square-foot building in the city of Chester, the former Chester Community Hospital, and it sits on 13.4 acres. The property has been bought by a private, two private doctors, Dr. Wang and Dr. Lee, and they have set up an urgent care center, they have set up an adult daycare, they have set up a step-down rehab center, so when people go to the hospital and they need, before they can go home, they need rehab, they can come to Silver Care. The property will end up having a restaurant, a gym, 100 affordable, independent living units for seniors, a nursing home, drug and alcohol rehab, and it's already a COVID testing and a vaccination center. The project is a $60 million project, and it will create 300 jobs, new jobs, in the city of Chester. Ladies and gentlemen, city council people, this is the largest economic development project in the city of Chester since the building of the soccer stadium. The project qualifies for this type of funding, and I hope I'm being recorded, because of all the projects that I've heard, and I'm not being prejudicial, I work on a lot of projects, this one qualifies for the American Rescue Act funding. We are seeking low-income housing tax credits with Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, we're seeking new market tax credits with the federal government and with local CDFIs, we're seeking RACB funds, we're seeking DCD funds, we're seeking grants and loans, and yes, we are seeking American Rescue Plan funds. We're excited about the project, the project fits queerly into the American Rescue Plan Act, and we urge you, we urge you, regardless of all the other projects that you have seen, this one, as far as I know, is most consistent with your plan. Are there any questions for me? Thank you so much.
Madam Chair, those are all the speakers who have signed up.
All right, thank you. And I have additional comments that were submitted to us. The first one is from the American Heart Association. The public health crisis and resulting economic stress has put local governments under immense strain. The American Heart Association understands we are still navigating unprecedented times. As stated in Delaware County's recovery plan, a primary goal of the ARPA program is to address the differential health outcomes the COVID pandemic has highlighted. Delaware County, like many diverse political jurisdictions in the country, displays differential outcomes in health and quality of life. As champions for health equity, by 2024, the American Heart Association will advance cardiovascular health for all, including identify and removing barriers to healthcare access and quality. As we work to prioritize funding to address the needs of disproportionately impacted populations and communities, we ask that you consider investment in key areas that directly correlate to supporting good health by reducing the prevalence of cardiovascular disease, health equity programs, and hypertension programs. So health equity, the AHA has been a longtime believer that healthcare should be adequate, accessible, and affordable for everyone in America. Investments in, investments to address systemic public health challenges that have contributed to the unequal impact of the pandemic on underserved communities and vulnerable populations are a must, both at the state and local level. The American Heart Association supports the establishment of a health department in Delaware County that promotes optimal health, well-being, and health equity. The American Heart Association supports utilizing American Rescue Plan funding to establish and sustain the Delaware County Health Department, as we believe a localized approach to address health disparities will lead to improved health equity for all. In addition to our support of utilizing these funds for the Health Department, we are proud to continue our participation in think tank sessions to share our research and science around improving chronic disease, health equity, and access to quality care. When we think about hypertension programs, while heart disease is still the number-one killer in the United States and around the world, death rates have decreased significantly. Earlier and better treatment of high blood pressure has played a key role in the decrease. Managing blood pressure is a lifelong commitment, but strong scientific evidence shows that self-measured blood pressure monitoring, also known as home blood pressure monitoring, plus clinical support helps individuals with hypertension lower their blood pressure. Interventions such as this, coupled with lucrative investments in patient and provider education, health IT capacity, can greatly assist with long-term management of cardiovascular health. According to the report, examination of health and public health According to the report, "Examination of Health and Public Health Service Delivery in Delaware County, Pennsylvania," cardiovascular disease in Delaware County is a higher, is at a higher rate than neighboring counties and worsening. With the establishment of the Delaware County Health Department, we believe that it's important to incorporate life-saving, evidence-based strategies to improve chronic disease and blood pressure. That is why the American Heart Association supports utilization of American Rescue Plan, funding for programs that address cardiovascular disease, and increase hypertension and control rates among those at most risk and with limited resources. Thank you again for your ongoing leadership and responding to the needs of the communities and citizens, especially those disproportionately impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic. So with that, I will move on to council comments. Are there any comments, Ms. Schaefer?
Well, there's just one project I wanted to, we did not get a presentation on it. It was briefly mentioned in our listing, and that is out of our planning department. And it involves a project that we already have funded through DCNR for three, upgrade of three parks, Rose Tree Media, Upland, and Little Flower Manor. After the design and engineering was done for those parks, we were significantly short, and two of those parks are in disadvantaged areas that need more parkland. That is Little Flower Manor and Upland. And the shortfall that we face for those parks is 1 million, a little over 1 million for Little Flower, and 373,000 for Upland. So I want to just call attention to the need coming from our planning department for the investment in those parks. And then I want to make one short, given the hour, comment about moving forward with all of this. Well, two comments. The first is, some of these items are, you know, time-sensitive. So I feel that, you know, we're going to have to come up with a way to discern which ones are time-sensitive and make decisions. Some of them aren't so time-sensitive. So that, you know, I don't want to, by inertia, lose opportunity. The second comment I want to make, I completely forget what it is. Oh, I know what it is. The, there's one bucket here that I feel, I would like us to really think through, and that is the, I think it was $34 million, I don't know whether that was a year or total, for the government revenue. And I think looking, you know, for me, this money is really important now to get our economy kick-started, and for the measures that we can take in the next year to get our, get reinvested and get our economy moving together. So I, you know, money that we would put away for two years from now for government revenue doesn't make sense to me. That doesn't really address the here and now need of restarting our economy after this pandemic. That's it. Thanks.
Ms. Rutha?
Yeah, I found tonight's comments from staff and the public to be very informative. Obviously, I don't agree with everything because, you know, I'm pretty clear when I transmit that, but I also want to say that there was a lot of stuff that made a lot of sense to me. When you talk about lost revenue, for example, listening to the first responders, it's pretty, I know exactly what you're talking about. And I think it's well worth considering that. I wanted to say to all the people here who were talking about solid waste and, you know, there's areas of agreement, not necessarily on our scope of authority, but on the desire to look for ways to put this money to work that provides economic justice. And we're somewhat, our hands are tied because you can't put it into things that it can't go into, but one project I would like to, there's two things I would like to ask our staff to consider as projects going forward. One is potentially under the umbrella of economic and workforce development, taking advantage of opportunities presented by locating something in a underserved and under-resourced community, is looking at whether or not we can develop a county resource recovery center using ARP funds that would basically be a workforce development location and an opportunity to train workers, because a lot of people aren't going to stay in that job forever, but a lot of people also don't, don't have a solid work history, they don't have something they can take with them to get another job. They don't have the opportunities to upskill in a working situation, and these are all things that we could provide while we would also be moving towards a zero-waste strategy and furthering the needs to potentially better sort things like glass that might have a home, might have a recycling home here in the county with one of our, you know, own local businesses if we can make sure that we do a good job of sorting. So we can, we can kill a lot of birds with one stone, we can really leverage these ARP dollars to meet a lot of needs, and that reduces what we burn. It reduces what we truck potentially, it puts people to work. It's something I think we should consider. Similarly, I have also discussed this with Mr. Lazarus in the past, but I guess it didn't make it onto his list of things that hadn't been casted yet. And that is, we have some looming challenges here in the county. You know, I love the fact that everybody's focusing on Delcora today because sewers are a subject of things we can direct money towards, but I don't want to direct any money towards Delcora because right now the county's in a rather large lawsuit with them. And I don't want to put money into any local sewer authority that might wind up getting sold to Aqua. What I do want to put money into is creating a fund that could potentially, if municipalities are willing to partner with us and use some of their ARP funds, look at, look at creating loan funds or that could support now, today televising of laterals, which are privately-owned sewers, the sewer feed that goes into most collector systems. It's thought to be one of our biggest sources of inflow and infiltration, which is a huge problem with sewer overflows, and it is a huge reason why there are capacity issues with sewers. It's a huge reason why we end up processing a whole lot more wastewater than we would need to. And if we could figure out a way to televise and potentially finance necessary repairs that are needed today to areas where we have a lot of inflow and infiltration, we may be able to substantially reduce the flow into Delcora, we may be able to substantially reduce waste costs, we may be able to substantially reduce costs to homeowners. This is especially true in some of our oldest and underserved communities where this kind of investment typically doesn't happen. So I would like us to consider doing that. And I fully support the idea of investing in these parks. That was something else that was on my list, but Ms. Schaefer stole my thunder, so I do think we should be looking at ways to upgrade our parks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rutha. Mr. Madden?
Yeah, I will keep my comments very brief, given the hour, but I will also thank the many members of the public who came in and advocated for their respective priorities. We obviously have a very, very challenging set of decisions to make in front of us, but I will just, as a general matter, say that I support taking advantage of this opportunity to invest in the projects that have long-term payoff. I think as we evaluate these various opportunities in front of us, I'd like to really make sure that we maximize this, you know, really once-in-a-lifetime opportunity we have to take what was a tragedy and turn it into an opportunity to invest in our community in ways that really have long-term impact. So just looking at these, I think we should think about, you know, which really have that sort of, you know, teaching a man to fish instead of just giving him fish, kind of a model to them. And also to Ms. Sheehan's point, where we have the opportunity to leverage these dollars, I think we should really look at it that way. So, you know, we don't have to figure this all out in one fell swoop. This is something where we can adjust as we go. I agree with Ms. Schaefer, there are some things that need immediate reaction to, but a lot of this, over the next few years, we can really adapt and, you know, as we sort of see how this is going. So again, thank you all, and thank you for our staff members for putting the thought they put in together today. And that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Madden, and I'd like to echo my colleagues' thank you to everyone who came out today to make public comment and to our staff and department head who came out to present to us ideas for the county and Mr. Lazarus for putting this together. So thank you all. This is going to be a challenge, but the goal is to take the opportunity that we have at hand to use the funds that have been provided for us to make an impact for our community in the long term. So thank you all, and with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Actually, I would like to offer a comment, if that's okay?
Oh, yeah. Sorry, Brian.
You get 10 seconds, Mr. Zidek.
That's okay. Out of sight, out of mind. So I just wanted to offer two comments briefly. The first is that ARPA specifically considered a limited number of expenditures that might be allowed under the legislation, and one of them was the investment in sewers. I know that Ms. Rutha and a number of individuals tonight have talked about how we might use the ARPA monies to influence our sewers. I just wanted to bring to light the fact that we passed an ordinance last year to take over Delcora and have the county run our wastewater system, and I am confident that eventually we will succeed in that endeavor. And one of the objections of those who opposed this notion was that there was a need for significant investment in the sewer system. So I would submit that we should consider setting aside tens of millions of these dollars to make the necessary investments in Delcora when the county finally does take over the running of our wastewater system. And this is true whether or not we elect to expand the treatment facilities in Chester or make other adjustments. The other comment that I wanted to make is that I hope that we would also try to utilize some of these monies to offer real tax relief to our residents. While I understand that ARPA prevents us from just giving the ARPA money to taxpayers, we can fund some expenses that would otherwise be borne by the general fund. And if we're able to use ARPA monies rather than tax dollars to fund certain expenses, that reduces our need for tax dollars. And if we don't need as much in the way of tax revenue, that gives us the opportunity to offer tax relief. And I would also note that there is perhaps no better way to offer relief to our citizens from the effects of COVID, the underlying goal of ARPA, than to offer a measure of financial relief that a tax reduction would offer. And finally, I would also contend that it's not an either-or issue. I have no doubt that the county was called to spend money that only a global pandemic would necessitate, and there's no doubt that the money that the federal government has given us can be used to provide investments in dozens of valuable programs like we talked about tonight, and projects that will serve our residents for years. But we were granted almost $200 million between cares and ARPA. That's a lot of money almost any way you cut it. And given these grants, I believe that we can cover the increased expenses incurred by the county, make investments in our county, and also offer real tax relief to our residents. So that's all I have to say there.
Motion to adjourn.
Second. All of the favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it. Needing adjourn.